The meeting is now called to order. If you would, please join Vice Chairman Langley as he does our invocation, and Commissioner Rebboltz will do our pledge of allegiance. Please stand.
Let us pray. Eternal God our Father, we are grateful and thankful that you have given us the privilege to come together one more time to serve your people. God, and we are grateful on this evening that we can be about the business of this county, acting as one cohesive unit, not thinking about parties or nationalities or anything else, God, but we are doing what is best for your people. We thank you now, in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Our pleasure to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation under God, in the visible with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everyone here tonight. A little bit of a housekeeping. If you've got a cell phone, please put it in silent mode or either turn it off or carry it outside. Because of the coronavirus, we get to read this report one more time, hopefully. If anybody here feels like they're running a fever, please, please leave the building right now. Please only sit in the designated area, and I think according to the county manager, we are full at this point. Do not approach anyone in this room tonight closer than six feet unless it's sister or spouse or something like that. So, at this time, I'd like to move on with the -- does anyone -- and ask, does anyone here have a conflict of interest on anything that comes before the board tonight? Hearing none, we move on to the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry if I forgot this earlier because we -- somewhere on this agenda, I would like to --
Need you --
-- give you --
What?
Somewhere on this agenda, I would like to have a moment or something, that we could have some kind of resolution passed for our teachers, parents, and our lunchroom workers, which I think have done a heck of a job during these trying times.
Okay.
It's okay with this body.
Okay, let's move it down, if we can, to M., and we'll add item number four. Is there a motion to approve the amended agenda?
Let's move.
Second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Seven zero, motion passed. Okay, we're down to, if I can find it, we're down to public comments. Just a reminder, so we can, because we're going to have a long night tonight, one more time is three minutes. And first up is Representative, Third District, Keith Kidwell. Welcome.
I'm assuming I step to the microphone?
No.
What is up there for?
Don't forget to sanitize. All right, well, here, let me get to sanitize and get that microphone. After I'm done, again. These rules are terrible.
Time cleared.
I'm glad we don't have these in the house. I'm sorry. Thank you, gentlemen, for your time here this evening. I appreciate the opportunity to address Beaufort County. My understanding is you may be considering a resolution ordinance, what have you, to reopen Beaufort County. I would like to suggest that since we have seen just the throngs of people at Walmart and Lowe's, stores of that nature, and without the result of folks dropping over or even any major sickness beyond the normal scope of what we've seen in the general population, that we could certainly open the smaller stores and businesses within Beaufort County with very little danger to the people. Now, I would recommend that if somebody is sick or infirmed elderly in the high-risk group, go ahead and stay home, or wear a mask certainly when you go out. But I think for most of our businesses here in Beaufort County, they don't see more than 10 or 15 people a day. Common sense would have dictated that we shouldn't have shut them down to begin with, quite honestly. Okay? My position is we certainly should not have shut the churches down, because churches could have easily added four or five more services a day, thin out the number of people per time that were in there. But it's time to put North Carolina back to work. It's time to put Beaufort County back to work. I strongly urge you, as the commissioners of Beaufort County, to do that today, to bring our people back into business, and let's do everything we can to get Beaufort County back into black, get people off unemployment, and get this county working. Thank you very much.
I don't mind.
I'm going to get it.
Good evening, gentlemen. Thank you for your time tonight. Glad that I'm here, but not glad that I'm here, all things considered. As some of you may know, my daughter and I own several local businesses here that have been closed since the 17th of March. Forty-two business days that we have lost. Literally, five days before this, she had just invested her life savings to expand her business and fill a need here in Beaufort County by bringing in a new layer to her restaurant and wine bar. I am here just basically to do the same thing that Senator Kidwell just did. Let's get us open back up. We are not seeing the numbers that were purported statistically. Beaufort County at this point, 22 confirmed cases, three active at last count that I'm aware of, zero deaths. Forty percent of our counties in North Carolina have had no fatalities. Seventy percent have had two or less. So, the numbers are not showing that our businesses should be closed. We can put all the sanitation needed in place, especially with small businesses here in Washington. And if you think about it, especially restaurants, clean, clean, clean. We clean every day. We clean after every customer that walks in and touches anything in that building. And if you consider the populations, the number of people that are in Walmart, the number of people that are touching shopping carts, we can so much more easily control the germs and the sanitation in our environment when you're already this particular facility. Our maximum capacity is 49 people. So, we're already at low risk for a large population anyway. And I just think, not just for our businesses, but also so many of our friends that own businesses, not just in downtown Washington, but across the county, you've got people that are not coming back from this. And I just don't think that it is fair to our county to see small businesses just close up and to see the financial ruin that's happening. So, please consider that resolution to give us the opportunity to go back to work and to be serving you. Thank you.
Good evening, gentlemen. Good to see you.
How you doing?
And thank you for your time tonight. I appreciate it. I am a local pastor. My name is Linda Taylor, and the ministry I come from is called Winds of Change. And I just wrote down a few things that was on my heart that I wanted to share this evening. First is, I do thank you again for allowing me to have a word for this evening. According to the Constitution, which we're all aware of, and what that means, and the First Amendment that Congress made, was no law respecting an establishment of religion or prohibition of that free exercise thereof, of abridging the freedom of speech or of the press or the right of the people peaceably to assemble and petition the government to redress our grievances. Tonight, there are a few grievances, and I'm sure that you're aware of some of the things that we have expressed in concern and has been spoken of tonight. I want to see our county reopened. I want to see us get back moving again. As a pastor, I really want to make a plea for our churches tonight to be able to peaceably assemble with consideration in our places of worship and harmony with guidelines, of course, as soon as possible. Also, I want to make a plea for the small businesses tonight to open before they lose their business or their livelihood or ability to take care of their families, of course, with safe measures. I don't think that they should suffer any more than what they've suffered, is what I want to say. When big businesses such as liquor stores and abortion clinics and other big businesses can stay open, I look at it even as exclusive to churches and small businesses, which are really needy and desperate to open again, and can look like a different agenda, which I don't want to get into. But in respect to all of that, in making your decisions concerning us tonight, I want you to consider all of these things, and also, most important, that we, the people here, have a voice. Whenever we, the people, lose our voice, then we are in deep trouble. And I believe it's time for us to soon open this county and our state, but especially this county. As has been said, I don't think that we have that much going on, that we can't consider that in a safe way. So, that's all I had to say tonight, and I thank you.
Thank you. Patricia Garrison?
As Margaret Thatcher notably stated, "A man's right to work as he will, to spend what he earns, to own property, to have states as servant and not as master." They are the essence of a free economy, and on that freedom, all our other freedoms depend. The Constitution of the great state of North Carolina in Section 1, Article 1 guarantees to the citizens of the state the enjoyment of the fruits of their own labor and declares this an inalienable right. The citizens of Beaufort County did, as we were asked. We stayed home, many closed their businesses, and they are the citizens that are on the front line. They have been denied their constitutional right, as is protected by the United States and the state constitution. Beaufort County can safely open its economy and allow the citizens to determine their future through individual responsibility. I want to thank the commissioners that had the foresight to present this resolution to reopen Beaufort County, and I want to thank the patriots that support reopening And I just did my due diligence, right? Thank you. I have done that 100 times today. I have. Thank you.
Thanks, Patricia.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, allow me to come and speak today. Some of what I've got to say has already been said, but we need to open up Beaufort County. We're not Wake County, we're not Mecklenburg County. We don't have the population that they do. We need to have our churches back open. You know, the churches provide a service that, yes, they can call you up on the telephone, and my church calls everybody every week, but we need to be able to go to church and be able to pray and love Jesus and be able to come together and meet like we're two. I feel sorry for our high school seniors this year. These kids have missed prom, missed their graduation, a lot of them will never go to another place else, won't go to a trade school, won't go to college, go straight into the work field. But now we're trying to close down businesses. Percy's Chest on Main Street closed down because of this. I can't see how businesses like Russell's or Naughty Life or down on Main Street where Stewart Jewelry can survive this shutdown. We've got to do something and get us back open. EMS calls are down, don't let nobody tell you nothing different. I have several family members that work at different hospitals, they say, and they work in emergency rooms. They said the calls are not coming in. We don't need to be putting in extra units because of a model. We need to put in extra units when they're needed, but we don't need extra units at the community college or down at Blunts Creek because the calls are not coming in. People are scared to go to the hospital right this minute, scared to go and get the coronavirus. But it's all a big hooey about nothing. We need to open up Beaufort County. We need to get our people back to work, and we need to get everything going back to the way it used to be. I did homeschool for my grandkids a couple weeks ago, but if you hadn't had to do that for any of your kids, you're lucky. I don't want to do it. I've got a master's degree. I've got a third grader. I couldn't do his work, couldn't figure out how I was going to do his work. He didn't know how to do his work. So, what are these kids, you know, doing? Now they're sitting at home, mom and dad trying to make arrangements for childcare if they're capable of going back to work. But we need to be able to open back up and everybody go back to work. Kids ain't going to go back to school this year. They need to open up August and get right back on it and get back on the grind. I thank the teachers. I thank the school bus drivers. I thank the lunchroom ladies that worked diligently during this timeframe, and I'm happy I ain't one of them. Y'all have a good day.
You don't blow into it or touch it. You have to wash it off.
Don't you touch it, Doc. Don't you touch it. It'll lexicu you.
Your boy is curious.
That's it, Dan. You got it.
Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. I came prepared to talk a little bit, but I don't think I'm going to talk much, because I must say that I believe and agree with 99% of what's already been said. Whatever I'd have to say would be a repeat, and I want to commend, get this one, Commissioner Richardson for his resolution, which I support and --
Death is the same way.
I really support that and think it's wonderful for Beaufort County. We do need to get back to work and get our businesses going, and let's pray that they finish Main Street pretty soon. Thank you. I've washed my hands so much, I think I've gotten two or three layers of skin off already. All right. But, not the skin I want is not off, so, anyway, I don't know how to do that, guys.
You done good. We don't want you cleaning house.
What do I do with this?
Carry it out, litter the trash.
Hold up a capacity. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I just want to tell you all that when I was a little kid, the fallout shuttle was at the church. And when I was a little boy, my mama told me, you know, she'd take me to church every Sunday, and it was a fallout shuttle, and I knew where to go if everything went south, I knew where to go. And that's been a long time ago, and I don't know what to do now. We don't have any civil defense plan. If the army trucks had to bring water in here, like they did for fracking up in West Virginia, we don't know where to go. If electrical-magnetic pulse hit, we liable to lose all communications, and we need to plan where we're going to meet at ahead of time before it really happens. And I was talking about to you guys about the water down there on the east side of town, and it smells like chlorine, and the United States Environmental Protection Agency said you got a 90% chance, 92% chance of getting cancer from chlorinated water and fluorinated water. And we got both of it going down to my friend's house. I came in here, I told you all about it, and I was told that they reminded me that this wasn't town hall. And now my friend's got, he's going under the, he's going through chemo. He's got a brain tumor, and he's going blind, and it might take his life. And like I told you all guys about that a couple months before it happened, and nobody listened to me. In fact, they told me this wasn't town hall. And I've got a $900 water bill before in town with no leaks, and they play hot potato with me. They pass me back and forth between the county and the city, and the city and the county, and the city's in the county. So, we need to figure out what's going on here, because, you know, it's not right to the people that live here. And anyway, we got to get it right. You gentlemen have a good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Swine.
Thank you, gentlemen. I appreciate it. Go hang in there, okay?
Thank you for your time this evening. This Wuhan coronavirus situation has certainly gotten out of hand. I think what really hit me, though, was when the governor started issuing all of these executive orders. And the question I asked was, where is his statutory authority? The reason I had that concern was because I served in the Jim Martin administration as the general counsel or chief lawyer of the Department of Health and Human Services for the state. And in that capacity, I spent four years going through and having to establish statutory authority for all of our rulemaking. And if the secretary wanted to issue a departmental directive, I was the one that approved statutory authority there. Same if the secretary wanted to submit a proposed executive order to the governor. So, statutory authority is something that I've worked with in the state government context for years. And even after that, I was appointed by the Speaker of the House to the North Carolina Rules Review Commission, where we looked for and approved statutory authority of every rule by every agency that was submitted throughout state government. So, when these orders came down, that was something that I looked at very quickly. And what that reveals is that under the Emergency Management Act, the governor does not have this authority. 166A-19.10 gives the governor lots of unilateral authority in dealing with state agencies, with counterpart government and private relief agencies and so forth. But when you get to things that really impair the rights of citizens, that comes under a different statute, which is 16A-19.30. And that specifically requires the concurrence of the council of state. Council of State, of course, is made up of all the other statewide elected officials. His first executive order, or one of the early ones dealing with the restaurants, was actually taken to the council of state. Council of State voted no, but Roy Cooper goes out later that day and issues it anyway. That was an unlawful act. His executive orders since then, he's not even gone to the council of state. He's just unilaterally exercised authority he does not have under the statutes or under the Constitution. And to me, this is very troubling. We live in a constitutional republic, and our state is supposed to be governed by the rule of law, but we have a governor who is not following the rule of law. So, I would urge you to take a stand. Don't sit back for the governor taking authority he doesn't have. This is a very dangerous precedent for our freedoms and our constitutional rights. I'm reminded of a sign that was carried in an anti-lockdown protest in Berlin, Germany, that said, "Freedom isn't everything, but without freedom, everything is nothing." And that's the situation we're dealing with.
Jim Madison? See? He's out front. You got one more?
I don't have him on the list. Okay. Welcome.
Well, thank you. My name is Jessica Trish. I am here speaking on behalf of myself as a family physician in opposition of any resolution which seeks to override the North Carolina's government's recommendations based on COVID-19, specifically the resolution that would ease our shelter at home in Beaufort County. As a family physician, I find that these resolutions, I find them concerning. I'm aware of the economic hardships and the frustration of being socially isolated. However, these things are working. We are flattening the curve. I'm here, I haven't worn scrubs since training. I take them off when I go home, before I walk into my house. I wear my mask, I wash my hands. All of us are doing this, and it's working. To stop it against the state leader's advice would be detrimental to Beaufort County. I want to remind everyone in this room that non-clinicians should not be making clinical decisions. The clinical decisions that were made by the state were done with the support of many different types of physicians across the state. It wasn't one or two people. We sought, the people sought out information from people across every region. They were well thought out and well informed. Excuse me, I get nervous when I talk. There are signs that we are flattening the curve, but we do not need to extend it or create a second curve. People over age 65, and there's a lot of them in this room, are at the greatest risk. I am the only one in here wearing a mask. There is hands, hands on there, so that's good, but these are things that are concerning. These 65-year-old and above may not realize they're sitting next to an asymptomatic, meaning no-symptom person. If we open up our county, there's nothing to stop others from coming in. For example, Pitt County, which currently has, at least as of this morning, 135 cases. So, they can come visit us and our businesses and great for businesses, but if they're asymptomatic and come in contact with us, someone else, that's going to be the problem. As a concerned Beaufort County resident and as a concerned family physician, I urge you, please, to vote against these resolutions. I can't express enough the concern that me and my colleagues have. I want to open the economy, and we need it, but opening it now too soon will cause it to close again in the fall. Thank you.
Yeah.
Jessica Trish, T-R-I-C-H-E.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night. Absolutely.
Thanks.
You're welcome. Did anyone else? Want to do this, out of curiosity? You're welcome. Did anyone else? Do you want to do this, out of curiosity?
Is anyone else? I didn't have her on my list. Okay, anybody else?
I have three emails.
Okay, these are the ones you're going to read. Okay, thank you.
The following are three emails I received today asking to be read into the record. The first one is from William Leonard of Chacoody. Please vote yes to Commissioner Richardson's proposal to declare Governor Cooper's executive order regarding COVID-19 restrictions as null and void. These restrictions, in addition to being unconstitutional, have placed an extreme financial hardship on over 1 million North Carolina workers and business owners. Thank you. The following is from Barbara and Rodney Lawrence of Bath. As very senior citizens living in eastern North Carolina, my husband and I are concerned that Commissioner Hood Richardson will use his power to override the governor's order for us to remain in quarantine until there is scientific evidence that COVID-19 is under control. We are fortunate to live in a sparsely populated area of the state and have so far avoided the worst of the epidemic. We believe that if you relax the governor's orders, we will lose the protections which have kept us safe up to now. I, for one, do not want to die struggling for breath on a ventilator, and I am sure Commissioner Richardson does not want that either. Next one is from Mike Baer. Dear sirs, Governor Cooper's statewide reopening plan is based on facts. Here is a fact: Approximately half of the people in Walmart and Food Line do not currently wear masks. While they can risk their own lives, they do not have the right to endanger the lives of essential workers. Our business has donated over 5,000 masks to the sheriff and police office, fire and emergency response personnel, the hospital, Eagles Wings, Beaufort County Schools, and many other groups within this county. People have begged for masks, and we attempt to service as many people as possible. While our county's numbers are limited in regard to COVID-19 cases, we need to keep them low. If you rescind the order, cases will rise. Your mandate will be reversed, and you will look short-sighted. Why risk what we have managed to avoid for a small, short-term gain that may result in loss of life? In my mind, allowing residents to bring guns into any business is a poor decision. While I understand people have the right to own guns, they have no place in the government office. It just takes one odd duck to put us on the front page of CNN, Fox News, or WITN. Then all the hard work of the chamber will be shot to hell, pun intended. This is not a political email, it is common sense. Please review the following. Internal Trump administration projections estimate that about 3,000 Americans will die from the coronavirus every day by June 1st, according to the CDC document obtained by New York Times. The increased estimates come as states have eased restrictions and offer a weekend. Many Americans spent outside at protests or enjoying spring days in the park. Florida, Colorado, Indiana, Nebraska, South Carolina, and West Virginia, among others, moved to loosen restrictions in an attempt to revive a sputtering economy and calm restless residents. But the projections make clear that these reopenings come with fatal risks. The novel coronavirus incubation period, or the time from exposure to developing symptoms, ranges from two to 14 days, according to the CDC, and the virus can even spread among people who show no symptoms at all. With widespread testing still limited, the consequences of these reopenings may not be evident for several weeks. Even in reopening states, officials continue to recommend people stay at least six feet away from others, wear a cloth mask outside the home, wash your hands frequently, and avoid touching your face.
Thank you. We ready for Jim? He's coming. Go get him.
Who was here last? Did they clean up?
Yeah, they did a good job.
All right, well, I hope everybody's doing well. So, you know, I'm going to give you a COVID-19 update. I want to start off with some numbers. Three and a half million American, or three and a half million worldwide cases have been reported. And in the United States, we're talking 1.1 million and 67,913 deaths. So a little bit closer to home in North Carolina. Today, at about 11 o'clock, they reported 11,848 confirmed cases, 430 deaths. Almost 60% of those deaths have occurred in a congregate setting. And right now, there's 498 hospitalized. In Beaufort County, we have 22 confirmed, zero deaths, zero hospitalized right now. And we have 19 that were considered recovered. Recovery definition did change. It used to be seven days from the onset and 72 hours without a fever, but that changed to 10 days longer. So they've added three days to that recovery definition. So just looking at the state numbers here, you can see that of the deaths, 87% of them are in people that are 65 and older. And a lot of the next higher would be those that are susceptible because of pre-existing conditions. Looking at Beaufort County numbers, if you look at the red numbers, this is the cumulative number of cases that we've had since the very beginning. And the little blue bars represent the day-to-day counts that we've had. So we've had three days where we had two cases reported, confirmed, but most of the time, we get one reported. So this graph here shows the percent of emergency department visits so far that are for COVID-like illness. And this compares to the last two years. And that's confusing because COVID hasn't been around, but what it is, is COVID-like illness also includes influenza and other kind of respiratory illnesses. So this would be all cases of respiratory illnesses that occurred throughout the season. And it's the number of, the percent of those people that went to the emergency department, how many had these symptoms. And this is the Sentinel system that we use to kind of monitor the flu season. And because of its similarity with COVID, they're able to use that same definition. And then you can see the red, which is the current year, we have three humps that have occurred. The first two are attributed to influenza, and the third one is more associated with the COVID-19. And you'll see some numbers for that a little bit later. This is the same graph, but it's broken down into regions. And the green bar, green line, rather, is region six, or it's region one, which is us. So the last week or so, our region actually has become higher numbers. However, that's really hard to interpret that as, you know, interpret that because of the changes in who's going to the emergency department. I meant to go back to this one here. The star means that the county, or the state of North Carolina, is using this indicator in order to follow trends, in order to follow the phases of reopening the state. So this is one of those numbers that they'll look at. This one here, graph is, shows all the tests that have been done as part of the Sentinel Surveillance Program. The certain locations throughout the state do test on all respiratory illnesses. And they'll send it off, and it has, it's a panel of all the different viruses that are out there. And so the green bar, green line represents influenza, and the blue line represents the COVID-19 test. So you can see, we definitely had a peak flu season. And you'll see those two humps there, which kind of correlates to that first map I showed, first graph I showed you, that had three humps. And the blue line at the bottom kind of makes that third hump show. So this is another indicator that the state is going to use to look at reopening. And the dark blue line is the one that you'd focus on in here, because it's a seven-day average of the number of new cases that have been reported. And so you can see, it was going up and up, and there, at the very end, you got a little bit of a dip that's starting to go down, which would be a good indicator for them to reopen if that continues on that trend. I would expect this to go up if we start doing increased testing, because the more people you test, the more likely you are going to have positives, and they're going to be reported in that way. It's okay. So this is another indicator that they're going to use, and it's the percent of tests that are conducted that come back as positive. And you can see that a great deal of decline has occurred over the last week or so. And so again, I think that's a good indicator of hopefully relaxing the guidelines that are out right now. This is done by the, what they call the hospital epidemiology folks. They monitor the people that are being tested in their facilities. And so the orange line shows that about 6% to 7% of the people that are tested for any kind of respiratory illness are coming back positive for COVID. If I may go back to the statewide one, you can see that we're talking about, down to about 8% from a high of 16, or 14% of people that were tested were positive. In Beaufort County, we've been monitoring this as well since the outbreak started. And I reported it in weeks, because the numbers are too small to try to do it daily like everybody else. So we did it a week at a time. So you can see, the high was the first week where we were at 9% of those we tested were positive. And then we've gone down to the point where we're at, last week, it was about 2% of the people we tested were positive. The blue bar represents what's kind of been our average throughout the whole time. And so that's going to be important when we, if we start increasing our testing, because increased testing numbers will go up. But as long as that percent stays about the same, then it's not indicative of that number going up because of an outbreak, but more or less just the increased testing is causing that. And then another state indicator is the number of hospitalizations. This is the one that is going up. And if they're using that as a trend, then, you know, that would not be a good thing to see. However, how long somebody stays in the hospital has a lot to do with the numbers going up. Since a person, you know, may be in there for a long period of time, it's always going to be going up until that person finally goes home, I guess. And this is kind of a snapshot of what those hospitalizations look like as far as age goes. The top, the dark blue would be the number of total. And then you can see the over 65 is the light blue line, 50 to 64 is the kind of yellowish line. And then, so those are the top two of people that are being hospitalized. And out of all the people that are being hospitalized, you can see the admission numbers, and the blue would represent what number were for ICU. So they were pretty severe cases. So we're looking at anywhere from 20 to 40% or so of admissions to the hospital are into the ICU statewide. That's it for data for y'all. But as we're moving forward, you know, we're planning, in the EOC and in the Health Department, to eventually get to this reopen position. And so what we really want to do is make sure that we advise the businesses on how to do that. So what we would like the businesses to do is plan on how they're going to facilitate that social distancing in their work site. We want them to monitor the health of their staff, and that becomes important, because once you monitor your staff, if you see somebody sick early, you can pull them out, then there's less chance of them getting their coworkers sick, and less chance for them to spread it to their patrons as well. We do recommend the mask with the large crowds in public areas. Protect the high-risk employees that may work there, so you may be extra cautious with them, or provide some kind of barriers. Disinfection is very important in this step. And then avoid non-essential travel, especially the areas with high incidence of COVID-19. So we'll be beating the drum on that for over the next couple, three weeks. We also want to target high-risk individuals and have them stay at home as much as possible, avoid large crowds. And sick people, frequently wash your hands, reduce or eliminate visitors to your home, monitor your temperature daily, and if you are symptomatic, call your provider. This is kind of information that we're going to continue to go out there during this reopening phases that we move forward with. So on testing, when we first started testing, we were looking to see if we had it in our community. So we were doing the test, hopefully not getting somebody, but watching for that first one. And then we started watching for community spread of the virus. Early on, we saw that we were community spread. And so therefore, we had to move to a different type of mitigation effort. And so we moved our testing to need. So we asked the physicians, you know, if it's a mild case, they can go home, and you may not need to test them, especially because we didn't have a lot of supplies and PPEs to do that. So they would treat them as though they have it, but we didn't have them as confirmed cases. And now with the reopening of things, when we get to that phase of reopening, we, as the Health Department and our healthcare alliances that we have, has been working on this, we would want to open the ability to test more. Because like I said, I advise the businesses to monitor your, the health of your employees. And so we want you to have a place where you can send them quickly, get the test done, and then get them back to work as soon as possible and not have to wait the whole time period. And then part of the problem right now we have is still the availability of PPEs, very difficult to get, to have to test that many. You know, we're looking at ramping up 50 more tests a day, and then the PPE to do that is going to be very difficult for us to do those kind of numbers. So I do expect to see more people tested, which means I expect to see more confirmed cases. So, you know, the public, don't be surprised when you see more people coming up positive. And that's why it's important for us to monitor what percentage of the people are, actually that are being tested are positive. So moving forward, we do continue to run the EOC operations, emergency operations, in order to stay on top of everything and try to advise and try to move, try to get some PPE. A lot of different things we're trying to do there. Public information's a big deal. You know, we try to make sure that the public knows what's going on. And we try to give out information about every day or so. Of course, y'all get the Situation Report that Chris Newkirk sends out daily so that you can stay at top of what we are doing. So we do plan on increasing testing in the very near future. We want to ramp up the contact tracing, so that when somebody does come up positive, we want to get in there, identify them, and try to get all their contacts informed about their potential exposure, so that if they can, they can be isolated, so that they can't spread it to the next person. And then we do want to provide guidance to the businesses and elderly and anybody else, the churches that need some guidance on what to do. And then we are, long-term wise, we are planning for the vaccination stage of this, running under the assumption that the vaccine will come out, and then we'll have to do 45,000 shots. And I think we're going to try to plan to do it in about two weeks, do all that. So that's where we're at.
Questions for Jim? Sam?
Yeah, I have some questions. We talked about testing last month, and you didn't have much to offer. You have much more to offer this month. What have you heard from the governor's office about testing, and when will it begin?
I was reminded that I got... Talked to the microphone last time. Anyway, I think that, yes, they are ramping up. They desire to ramp up testing. The governor does. That's their plan. So we're trying to plan on that, not knowing exactly when that increased testing from the governor will come down, or the desire for it. We think we will probably go ahead and start ramping up this week to get the process in place, so when the governor does put it out, because more public people would be interested at that time. So we're looking at the criteria for getting tested, so we're looking at suspected case of COVID as the criteria to get the test.
Yeah.
It's pretty broad at this point.
Yeah. But is there going to be a, kind of a countywide testing beginning at some point where folks that want to get that want to get tested can be tested?
Well, that's why, I don't think we can ever manage wanting the test. If you just want the test, I don't think we can manage that because of the PPE. So we couldn't safely do it. So it would have to be based off of that criteria.
Yeah, okay. So we're, we're still back at square one where we're not going to really know what the true model is for the death rate.
So you're talking about, I think you're talking about prevalence then?
I guess.
Because, yeah.
We're calling it.
Antibody testing.
That would be best.
Okay. Well, right now, I don't, I don't support doing antibody testing just because of, as a county effort. If you as an individual person are interested in that, then okay. The reason being is, right now, I've had 22 positives in the county. So that means, let me see here, I actually wrote the numbers down somewhere. Oh, yeah. That means I've got 4.7 cases for every 10,000. That's not very many. Okay? So if you take the San Bernardino study and some of the other studies that have shown prevalence data, they said that maybe 50 times more people have had it and didn't know it. So if I use that number, which is the high end, because they say either 10% or 10 times that number to 50 times that number. So I've used the high end of that number. That means that I have about 234 cases for every 10,000 people. So that would only be 2% of Beaufort County would be positive, assuming that. So I'd have to do a whole lot of people to get one or two to come up positive. And if, if I was a business looking at that number, you know, okay, if I have 100 employees and I tested all 100, I might get two of them come up positive. But am I going to work those two and not the other ones? So I think it's better for that business to open up. And then as soon as somebody's sick, get them tested and we'll find them.
Right.
And then we can do that contact tracing.
I understand.
Because the prevalence is so low, I don't think it would do us any good right now.
Let me ask you this, since we're on that subject. Have you heard anything come down from the Governor's Office about testing where the state will mandate a certain amount of tests and that you or someone else, preferably the Health Department of Beaufort County, will administer these tests or be part of it at least? And then so that we will have a better understanding as to, like you said, how many people may have been exposed and have, have had it, and maybe some not even know it, so that we will have a true understanding just how devastating this pandemic is, or maybe not so devastating. Because we've been sold that it's a devastating pandemic, and we don't know for sure. I mean, I hear death rates of 5.7%, 6.4%, 7.2%, and don't you understand science? And every time I hear that, somebody say that, they're either, I think they're either an idiot or a liar, one, or both, probably both. So nobody really knows what the rate is. And we're not going to know until a certain amount of testing is done.
That's, the case fatality rate is what you're saying, is 5.6% or those numbers like that versus the infectious fatality rate, which is the actual number of people that have the disease.
Which is, these are bogus numbers. These, they have, there's no sure variables to come up with this answer, and these are bogus numbers being thrown around.
Right. So I think what you are, what you're trying to get at is the infectious fatality rate by adding all the people that had.
Exactly.
Jim, have we, what anybody put on a ventilator that you know of yet? In Beaufort County?
We have had two people on ventilators.
Right.
But they're not there now. They've been taken off. But I have the answer here. Just let me think about it. So the infectious fatality rate is, is what you're going for. So we could not, I don't think we could do that in the county for the reason I just said. It would be so hard for us to find it. If I tested 400 people, I might be able to get eight people that come up positive. And I may not because of randomization. So I think it, studies like that need to be done in more prevalent areas, higher numbers of people.
Jim, this is, this is why I'm saying, I don't think we're able to, to commit to this.
Right.
However, what is the mandate from the Governor's Office? Is there anything coming out of the Governor's Office about mass testing?
Yes. No, I'm not, I'm sorry, not mass testing by definition, by mass testing, just open up there.
Semi-mass testing.
Study. I think what they'll do is, and my understanding is they are working with UNC, Duke, and ECU, and they are going to do X amount of tests, and they're going to do what you're saying to the general population in order to determine what the prevalence rate is in those areas. So yes, they are doing it. I don't know the whole plan. All I know is that's what they're planning on doing.
I mean, I.
So I'm not doing it as a county, I'm not doing it as a county person.
Well, I just got one more question.
Especially, Mr. Chairman, I have some questions.
I just have one more question.
Okay.
This will take but a minute. We're talking about opening up Beaufort County business here either tonight or soon thereafter. And you talked about people knowing what is the best and proper method of socially dealing with one another, distancing, whatever you want to call it. Would you consider putting together a, an exposé, so to speak, on the website, maybe even do some video, maybe come to this room since we have the cameras set up at the front wherever, and put together some videos so that the public will know what is best, how to handle the situation in their own specific situations?
Yeah, I think, you know, we're talking about giving out that information, so videos would be a good way.
Videos.
Yes.
We could offer this room, couldn't we, to them, to do it? We have people on our staff that could video, and we talk at no extra cost. And I think it would be a wonderful public service.
Yeah, we're going to try all types of media to make sure, like we have been doing, trying to get all kinds of media out for it.
Okay. Put it on the website.
President, do you have a question?
Well, I just wanted to make an observation, and that is, if you consider getting to herd immunity on any virus, our numbers are so low that we have created a problem for ourselves. And I don't want to go any further than that because I don't want to take it where it would go.
We do need to get the herd immunity, I acknowledge that.
Right now.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, right now, we're only testing people that display symptoms.
That's correct.
And they're in the 5% range? Or 2% or what'd you say?
Out of the, if we, 5% of the tests that we have done have come back positive.
Okay. But all those people that we tested were showing symptoms?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
A lot of them are done by physicians that have different levels of symptoms.
Right, right, okay. When do you think you can get PPEs?
Well, we've been trying for two months now.
I know.
Where, since the state is trying to push the increased testing, I'm hoping that they'll also send us some PPEs, PPE to help.
But you haven't gotten any?
We've got enough for what we're doing right now.
Right. But if you ramp up based on what you're talking about?
We put in a request for 50 more a day.
Okay.
Equipment for that.
Commissioner Waters?
John's question was one that I had, but another one, since you're here, is, do you, do you think our businesses that have been closed are ready to open up?
I believe they are ready to open up. You mean from a public health perspective or just in my belief that?
From a public perspective.
Do I think that we can relax it?
And open?
See, I said, just put me on the spot there in there, Frank.
Well, I mean, you know, the concern, the concern that, that I've had voiced to me by some business owners is that we need information. We, we need to know what's expected of us because we understand that the community and the public is not going to come in our place of business until they feel safe.
Right.
So it gets back to what Stan is saying about educating those people with a video. And I know we've got some people in this room that would like to open up tomorrow morning. And my question, it's, it's, I'm not sure that, that most of the businesses that I've talked to, they've got to have some help from the Health Department to feel comfortable to be successful.
And I monitor the numbers that we have in our county, and I follow the guidelines of the state epidemiologists for my recommendations. I will say this whole topic is, is, is more than one viewpoint, it's more than one lens that we're looking at. You know, you got your social lens, you have your economic lens, you have your political lens, and I'm just one lens, I'm the health lens. So I'm sticking with the health lens because that's what I know. That's my expertise.
Well, my.
At this point, the state has their guidelines that they're putting out, so I'm trying to follow that. And right now, they're saying they want to do this phased process, and I think the trends are showing that they'll make that decision. I, that's what my opinion is, that the trends do favor relaxing towards that reopening.
My, my closing comment is that I think that you and your department's done an excellent job with your daily reports, put it out there on Facebook. You know, I think a lot of us have shared, a lot of us has tried to, you know, spread that word. So thanks to you and your department.
Thanks. Emergency management helped a lot with that too. I just want to make sure that Chris gets his due.
You ready for your second for?
Yeah, I got to do another one, don't I?
Yeah.
All right. I am ready. So I'm here on behalf of asking you to unfreeze a physician for the social worker to her responsibility. So I have one leaving, and the responsibility that she has is to case manage children and mothers, you mothers or pregnant moms, and then soon after they have the baby, care, manage them, and make sure that, you know, they're followed through with the goal of trying to reduce the risk that is usually associated with these high-risk residents that were identified usually by their provider and given to us to follow. This physician is paid for by state dollars. There's no county dollars involved in it, so.
Motion to approve. Caesar, second?
Second, yeah.
Discussion? Commissioner Richardson?
Did I understand the, the position is paid 100% by state dollars? There's no county money in it?
Correct.
Okay, well, if it's 100% paid for by them.
All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Seven, zero, motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Motion to approve the consent agenda?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to remove item number one, budget amendment, Health Department, for more discussion.
Any more discussion?
Depending on when they want to hear it, I think we ought to move it up for a hearing. I don't think we ought to bump this to the last of the agenda.
So you want to, yeah, we're going to do it now, yeah.
All right. I remember what it was. What was it?
Budget.
It's your AA, buddy.
Oh, okay.
Page.
Page seven. Well, my question is.
Well, get it where you can hear me. My question is, there's $72,000 in state revenue that we're getting, and $21,000 is supplies, $45,000 is equipment, and maintenance and repair of a building is $5,900. Just tell us what we're spending this money for. What are we going to buy with this?
Okay, well, now, and that's spread out over two years. So, and I say two years is, they know that we can't get it all spent by this, into this fiscal year. So anything that doesn't get there goes on to the next year. But, see if I can remember everything. We do not have a testing room in the Health Department. We've been testing in a normal room. So what we want to do is convert it to a negative flow room so that testing can be done safely. So there's that. In order to get to that room right now, they have to go through the lobby, or they go through the back area and it's all grass. So it's wet when it rains and stuff. So what we want to do is put a sidewalk, that's a lot of the maintenance there, is a sidewalk that runs to that door. We need to order PPE for the next time this was to happen, so we have the supplies there. We also need to prepare for the vaccination, which is, we're expecting to occur sometime around December to March of next year, but we need to get all the supplies in position ready for that. Uh, let's see.
There's $45,000 for?
$45,000 for equipment, so.
Oh, we're getting a respiratory protection machine so that we can monitor and get everybody prepared to use the N95s for the future. They should, they should do, do that already, but that's what we're moving toward, so that equipment there. So some signs, some station, hand cleaning stations.
Okay, I'm satisfied.
Communication for pause, okay.
Okay, we get to take a vote on approving the consent agenda? All those in favor, raise your right hand.
We voted to approve.
We didn't vote, we just seconded, and we're just voting for the consent agenda.
You're voting to hear the consent agenda?
To approve.
To approve.
You're voting to approve the items on the consent agenda?
Right.
Oh, okay.
All right, okay. All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed, five, two. Thank you. Any, need a motion to do this budget amendment?
So move.
Second, is there a second?
I'll second.
Discussion?
You already did, it's on your.
Just rolling, okay, all right. All right, we're going into item number H, public hearing and decision by Brandon Hayes. Need a motion to go into public hearing?
Mr. Chairman, I move we go into the public hearing on updated flood maps.
Second. All those in favor, please raise your right hand.
Good evening, commissioners. Hope everybody's doing good.
Doing good.
We're going to do public hearing about our updated flood maps. I'm sure everybody's anxious to get that done. Before we do that, I was going to give a quick little overview about flood maps. The preliminary flood insurance rate maps and flood insurance study were issued to the Beaufort County by FEMA on August 17th, 2017, with a 90-day appeals period to submit technical information on flood elevations. All the appeals submitted during the appeal period were resolved, and FEMA issued a letter, a final determination, which states the preliminary maps and ordinance will become effective on June 19th, 2020. Which brings us now to the public hearing for the new flood maps, after which you'll need to decide whether to adopt the new flood maps. And also, if you've got any questions, I'll be glad to answer that.
Is anyone here from the public that would like to speak?
Mr. Chairman, just to let you know, because this is a little different from your public hearing.
Okay.
We also, in the notice on the public hearing, we notified folks that there were opportunities to speak in other matters than coming directly to the meeting.
Okay.
So it's my understanding that no one notified the clerk that they wanted to submit comments or be able to call in and do that. So what you have in the room are the folks that wanted to do that for this public hearing and the second public hearing.
Is there a motion?
I move we close the public hearing. I second the motion to close.
All those in favor, raise your right hand. Seven, zero, motion passes.
All right, and we've got the, the flood map prevention ordinance, and that's basically the same thing as our flood map ordinance previously, but there's no changes at all to that. So that was put pretty much cut and dry.
Any questions?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion we come out of the public hearing on the ordinance.
I'll second.
I'll second.
I move that we pass the ordinance as presented.
Right. Is there a second?
Second.
Is any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Seven zero, motion passes.
That is the ordinance and the flood maps, correct?
Correct.
Yes, and the flood map.
Correct.
Well, the maps, I always thought were part of the ordinance anyway, but...
We need Martin. Martin coming? Second. A second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Seven zero, motion passes.
Welcome, thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. The public hearing is to receive comments on a proposed Economic Development Performance Grant to Project River Breeze under North Carolina Statute 158-7.1. River Breeze is an expansion of a manufacturing company into a new air purification product line using light assembly techniques. Company currently plans to locate a facility in an out-of-state location, Beaufort County, North Carolina. The state may provide incentives to compete with the out-of-state location and to assist Project River Breeze in startup of their new manufacturing plant. The plan, plans, sorry, the company plans to invest $2.6 million in a facility and $1 million in equipment. Once at full capacity, they should employ about 76 people at an average annual salary of $38,244, sorry, $224. The average 2020 Beaufort County wage rate is $38,008. The jobs will include managers, engineers, shift managers, assembler, and administrative positions. It's proposed the county, in coordination with the state incentive, offer the company an Economic Development Performance Grant estimated at $100,000 to distribute it over the first five years of the project, to locate the facility, equipment, and the 76 full-time jobs. The grant requires the company, sorry, the grant will require the company to achieve its capital investment and job creation goals, plus be current on all its Beaufort County tax obligations to receive the proposed grant. The county intends to use general revenue funds as a source for this project, and the public benefits derived from this Economic Development Performance Grant are in the increase in property tax base and the creation of new jobs in Beaufort County.
Is anyone here from the public that would like to speak? Brian, did we receive anything? That's it?
Motion to close the public hearing?
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, raise your right hand. Seven zero, motion passes.
So the next agenda item is a request to provide that Economic Development Performance Grant to the Economic Development Partnership of North Carolina's Project River Breeze, River Breeze, to establish a manufacturing plant in Beaufort County. As I explained, the River Breeze is an existing manufacturer looking to expand. The high-quality air filters will be manufactured for medical labs by a manu... Sorry, it's very... Back to everybody, sorry. High-quality air filters will be manufactured for medical labs, by a manufacturing facilities and hospitals. Given the current pandemic, the company anticipates there will be a large global market for this product. As I said, the, we are down to two locations, one is out-of-state, one is Beaufort County. The state package that's being discussed is a $500,000 building reuse grant, $200,000 One NC grant, and probably about $76,000 in community college training. The jobs are going to be higher on average than the county average, and they will include a number of very high-paying positions, particularly the engineering positions. The Economic Development Performance Grant will be paid out over four years, and as I said, only after the project has paid its property taxes, and will not exceed the property taxes paid in any year. The grant will require the company to achieve its capital investment and job creation goals, plus be current on all its Beaufort County tax obligations to receive the grant. If the jobs are not created and/or held for the specified time period, the Economic Development Performance Grant will be returned to the county proportional to the number of jobs not created. So in conclusion, the Beaufort Economic Development staff would like to request the Board of Commissioners to vote to direct the county manager, the economic developer, and the county attorney to work with Project River Breeze to provide an estimated $100,000 five-year Economic Development Performance Grant to support with the aid of the North Carolina Department of Commerce, Economic Development Partnership of North Carolina, and other economic development allies to creation of 76 full-time jobs, an investment of $3.6 million in Beaufort County.
So move.
Second. Any discussion?
This expansion, when you say the company is expanding, is this 76 additional jobs?
Yes.
Or is it just, are the county jobs they have now?
No, it's new jobs. It's a new, whole new plant. The only reason it's called as an expansion is because it would be renovating an existing, existing building, and there's nothing there right now. So yes, it's all new, all new equipment.
All new employees.
All new employees.
Thank you.
Commissioner Waters?
What is the target date that you think, if we were to win, that this company would be in business in Beaufort County?
They would start, they would start renovating the building, let's say, in August, and probably about six months after that, so probably first, second quarter of next year. Thank you.
Any other questions? John?
So we're estimating the taxes, property taxes on the facility they're at right now is $100,000? What they're looking at?
No, the, all the new building and all the new equipment.
Okay, so the taxes on it?
Yes.
We're estimating an $100,000?
Yes.
What is being paid on that property right now in taxes?
It would be, I don't know specifically, there's not going to be any alteration to the existing buildings, so...
Right.
There would be a change in that. The land, yeah, there's no cost in land, there wouldn't be any change, because the building's there, the land's there, there'd be adding structure and adding equipment, so I would think it would be...
So right now, we're probably collecting $100,000?
No.
Over, I mean, not, not a, over a four-year...
No, the $100,000 is all the new taxes, property taxes, that would come from the new building and the new equipment. So there is no impact on the existing tax base.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Time to vote. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Seven zero, motion pass.
Thank you. The second item I have is a $16,275 grant that is coming through the Institute for Emerging Issues at NC State University from the anonymous grant program, so we don't actually know who the money's coming from. We've been working a lot in the last four years on workforce development, and this is somewhat a recognition of that effort. And these funds will be used to pay for things that the Beaufort County Economic Development Department does over the next two years, but also in association with partners like the Beaufort County Community College, Beaufort County Schools, NC Works, and the River East Workforce Development Board. Such work would include having local meetings and events for workforce development, supplies, software, curriculum, that type of thing, travel for training both of the individuals participating, but also people looking for jobs. Training classes and expenses leading to employment would be paid for, and, but funding cannot be used to support political lobbying or campaigns. So to reverse the trends, which I did give you a little graph, which is quite worrying, we had a lot of graphs earlier in the meeting, our workforce and our employment beyond the COVID-19 situation is gradually trending down over the last four years, and what we need to do is to educate our workforce to be able to take the jobs that are available. So to reverse the trend in Beaufort County's decline in workforce and employment, staff requests Beaufort County Commissioners' vote to accept the $16,275 anonymous trust grant and direct the BCED director to sign the MOU to receive that money.
Is there a second?
Second, motion.
Is, discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Seven zero, motion pass.
Thank you very much.
That is, that is one of the greater universities in North Carolina.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I see we have a break in about nine minutes. Representative Kidwell is here now, and I was wondering if we could give him a time to speak before we take our break? Or do you want to ask him to remain and see if he has, what his schedule is like? He's here now.
I would, I would like to do it right now, but I'd also like to limit the number of questions to you to one until we go around the room, okay?
Well, that's fine.
All right.
Yeah, you want to go, I'll tell you what, why don't y'all go around the room, and then I'll be last.
No, no, you'll be first.
I said, let's do that, take a break, let's, him say, he didn't ask all the questions he wanted to ask.
Yeah.
It's like I was in the third grade.
Come on, Representative. What a great, what a great...
Tell me y'all are something else. All right, I stand for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Keith, can I call you Keith?
That's what my mom called me, so...
I, I didn't have a chance to hear the press conference today. I did, as I was leaving, for the first time, I saw the governor with our two Republican leaders, and I've been getting some information from people that watched it. What do you think that we're up against as it relates to May the 8th, which is Friday?
Quite honestly, Commissioner, we have not seen a very detailed plan from the governor. He told us that there would be phases in which we would bring people back online, and kind of gave us some soft dates on that, but no real hard information. Initially, this was all designed to flatten the curve, and as the physician who spoke earlier had indicated, we have done that substantially. We really didn't even have much of a curve in North Carolina. And at this point, the last I heard from the governor was, his intention was until the people felt safe to go back outside. Well, I would encourage, if you don't feel safe, stay home, okay? But don't make me stay home because you don't feel safe, okay? I, I would suggest that there are people who never feel safe, and I'm not waiting that long. So I have actually signed on to a letter we sent to the governor asking for a very specific plan, and we desire that response. Hopefully, we'll see that in the next couple of days, but I won't hold my breath.
Commissioner Richardson?
I really don't have any questions other than to observe, based on what Representative Kidwell said. There was a press release that came out on WITN this afternoon, and it's just what you said. He's got these so-called three steps, but he doesn't tell you when you're going to step. And it can be a very long time before you step. I mean, for, the governor to be operating without law and as an illegal item, this is a terrible situation. And if you notice in his interviews, he never says law. He almost slipped the other day on one and said, people are not following the rules. Well, the rules are made by the governor. The law is a different item.
Commissioner Richardson, the law is actually made by the General Assembly. I would suggest at this point, our observation has been, we have come up against something that we have never seen before as a planet, not just as a nation or a state. This planet has never seen this type of a problem before. What it does is, when you have something like that that happens, it brings to the surface the failures in your laws, your plans, and your ideas of how things are going to happen. It is our opinion at the General Assembly, by the majority at this point, that we should have been back in session immediately upon a situation that was so drastic within this state that it required a statewide state of emergency. The elected representatives should be there representing their people, just like you gentlemen, come together on a regular basis to deal with the situations here at the county level. We're looking at what we need to modify in the ways of the Constitution and the laws of North Carolina to deal with this as we move forward, so that in the eventuality it ever happens again where things are this bad, the General Assembly would automatically come back into session to go up and do the people's business.
John, do you...
He's standing my back.
Go ahead, Sam.
Okay. Just dovetailing with what you just mentioned, what is the General Assembly proposing to do as a study to find where the weaknesses are and where the strengths are within what has gone on in the last month and a half, and how to remedy the situation so that hopefully we will be more prepared? I don't think you can ever be totally prepared, but be more prepared than we are. Now, we see what's happening in New York and where the deaths are, and we see Governor Cuomo groan on, on, and on, and they were totally unprepared. In fact, they went out of their way to be unprepared. Now, what can we do in North Carolina to be prepared next time, understanding that the state is closest to us, and truly, the state is the number-one government in our lives? And I'll leave it to you.
So, thank you for that question, Commissioner. I'm going to try and face you, but be cognizant of the microphone.
Face the camera.
So, very, really a lot of information that would be involved in that, and we probably don't have enough time to address all of it. What we intend to do is to look at, number one, the laws and how they should be corrected to deal with these scenarios. We also need to evaluate things like, we should keep a supply of PPE on hand for these type of scenarios in case it ever does happen again. You know, most of that PPE equipment's never going to go bad. You're talking about masks and suits and gloves and things like that, I guess the gloves might break down after a while, I don't have a chemical degree, so I don't know. But we've got to look at every aspect of our preparedness program to be sure that we understand how to deal with these things. I would suggest we also need to look at, what is the correct way to deal with these things? Because I think that's one of the things that we've not done properly, is how to correctly deal with a lot of these issues. We're also going to look at the county and the municipalities' abilities to deal with these types of things, because some counties have gone absolutely crazy, okay? Some counties have totally shut down and said, you can't even go outside of your house, okay? We won't let people into the county who own property here. And I would suggest, if you own property in a particular county and are paying taxes to that county, you have a right under the Constitution to access that property, unless it was an emergency such as there's an imminent hurricane. But when we're talking about a coronavirus or something along those lines, I don't think that that should restrict anybody from access to their property. So there's a lot of things the General Assembly is going to be looking at over the next, I would say, several years to deal with this, because there's none of this we're going to fix quickly. I think all of us, the state, the federal, and the counties, cities, need to evaluate, after we look back at this and say, what did we do right, what did we do wrong? At my business, we sit down every year on April 16th, and we have a meeting called The Good, The Bad, and The Ugly. What went right, what went wrong, and what went really wrong? I would recommend that each branch of government take a look at that and have that exact same meeting, and then make a determination as to how we're going to deal with that as we move forward, to make sure that we do the best job we can for our people in the future, and to make sure that when we do pass local ordinances or state mandates, that they're appropriate to the level that they should be, and, most importantly, to remain within the Constitution.
One question or a comment, but you and I both are business owners, like some other people up here, too.
people up here too. And I think it's the fear of the unknown. We plan, as you said, we budget, we do things, and something like this turns our apple cart upside down. And so we're trying to figure out, what do I do? Who do I go see? And now we, of course, we got the problem of being a pandemic, which is, again, who knows? Again, it's something brand new. So I think there's a lot of business owners are very nervous right now and look in some directions. So hopefully, we'll be in this thing together and we'll come out of this thing together. And I appreciate your time.
I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you gentlemen. As always, I am available to any of you at any time, as well as to the general population. As your county manager knows, I spend a fair amount of time emailing back and forth with him. You know, my responsibility is to make sure that Beaufort County and Craven County are getting the things they need and should have out of the state government. And I'd appreciate if the commissioners would take into consideration the possibility of adding to your agenda as a standing item, the opportunity for both your representatives and your senator to speak in the event that they're available to make it to your meetings. It's real simple. If we're not here, you just skip right over and go on. If we are, we can take four or five minutes at that time and go ahead and speak to the issues that you may have at hand. Again, thank you all very much. I appreciate you.
Thanks for coming.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that after public hearing, we set aside a number of minutes, let's say four minutes for each representative that comes, and then another period for question and answers thereafter. And that can extend as long as there be questions and there be answers.
Good question.
Right as a motion.
Second. Discussion. Is there a discussion?
I would support that, but I want some limiting. If we're going to put limitations on the presentation, I want us to have limitations on how long the Dog and Pony Show goes on.
Well, the Dog and Pony Show would be four minutes, and then there would be question and answer.
Well, I'm not interested in having a discussion for 30 minutes.
No, exactly. So let's limit it to four minutes. And then I think more will be derived from questions and answers.
So four minutes for Q and A?
No, just four minutes for the presentation.
For the whole? How much on the Q and A?
As I said in the motion, then the questions and answers could go on until they're open.
You need to put a limitation.
Questions, you got your representative there. Governing is a very serious matter. You need to go ahead and ask the pertinent questions and listen to the pertinent answers.
I'm sure he'll answer any text message I send, because he usually does.
Yeah, but this is a public meeting where you can make publicly.
Well, but if you've got a question.
Find out what's going on as well.
If you get it, well, okay.
That is important for the public.
I think it's only appropriate that we do have some limit on the time.
Okay, then suggest a limit.
Okay.
We accept the friendly amendment.
Sure.
I make a motion, I make a motion that he come anytime he want to come, and we allow this room, and whoever want to come and talk to him are free, just like we do for us on Assembly Day. We have time to talk to him as long as we want, when he's available. I'll put it that way.
Well, that's basically what I said, except for the four minutes in the very beginning.
But we're not talking about this meeting, to stay here all night, and you ask these questions and you ask things.
Well, I don't know. I don't think I understand.
Mr. Chairman, I take offense at the attitude of this group.
Be the same.
That because some commissioners are more intelligent and can ask more questions, that they be limited, and the dumb ones don't say anything. I take offense at this, because that's what you guys are sitting here saying. Why are you even discussing this? Invite the representative to come and ask questions, and go from there.
I think the dumb ones are the ones that ask the questions.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make an amendment, and hopefully, the person who made the motion and the one that second will agree to it, is that we limit that slot to 15 minutes, total presentation and Q and A, to 15 minutes.
I acquiesce to that amendment.
I'll agree.
But the time period, the time period should be right after public hearing, so he'll know, or he or she or they will know when it is, they can allot that time, be here, and then do what they want to afterwards, because their time's special too. And board.
Okay, ready to vote? All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed? Six one. Did you vote? Six one.
Exactly. Okay.
We're going to take a short recess. Can't wait for this one in nine minutes.
Back from recess, now back in session. Carney Hedgepath, that would be you?
That would be me.
Okay.
Thank you, Chairman Evans and Commissioners. Thank you for allowing me to put this on late notice. We had a change in our EMS staffing earlier today, first thing this morning, and you know, we're at, we have a minimum staffing for our EMS units to keep three EMS units, two QRVs in service. So we are one position vacant of our normal EMS positions. You know, last month, those positions or any positions that were not filled were frozen. And so I stand before you now asking permission to be able to advertise and fill a current vacant EMS position.
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
Is there a discussion?
When did the general leave?
This morning.
Yes, this morning.
I have a question.
Take a moment. Wait, wait, wait. Pete raises. Did we add an EMS unit someplace in the county at the college?
Yes. So going early into this event, off the projections we were getting from the state, the models that were coming, best I could give you analogy would be just like a hurricane coming. We've taken data that we think, and we start to put things in place. So we did, we had a phase approach. We had one truck, we added in Phase One. That truck went to the community colleges. It's EMS nine, and it is still in service at the college right now. Phase Two was changing our QRV in Blunts Creek to a transporting EMS unit, so it just took one additional person per shift to be able to do that. We did that in Phase Two, and we had a plan of Phase Three. We reevaluated as we were going at the end of the second week of Phase Two, and we actually did away with going to a third truck, and we pulled the QRV or the transporting ambulance from Blunts Creek back to normal. So the only truck we are running currently that is out of normal, we have one transporting EMS truck that is stationed at the community.
And what is, what's the staffing on that truck?
It's two people.
Two people, 24/7?
Full staff, 24/7, yes, sir.
And if you pulled that vehicle back, what would happen to your EMS count?
The EMS.
There a minute.
What that truck really is filling is we have our major populations in the city of Washington. City of Washington is running one EMS unit. That truck primarily about three quarters to seven eighths of its call volume is running backup into the city of Washington. So if we take that truck out of service in this event right now, then you're going to have old Ford truck, our old Ford truck, or our bath truck, or Chocolinity will be answering those calls coming. The reason we're still running that truck in service is not because of major call volume. In fact, when we look at April, I'm not looking at everybody, when we look at our April numbers, we are 12 calls diminished in 2020 versus what our numbers were in April of 2019. So EMS calls are down from this event. I think it was mentioned earlier, I think people are being very careful about dialing 911 and going to the hospital, just, you know, in general. Pandemic calls, I use that word because that's the dispatch code. If a person has flu-like symptoms, respiratory distress, we have a special code that comes up during the COVID event, which alerts our people to put on, and it was at one time an additional layer of PPE. We're running that anyway now. With that, once we transport that person that is falling under those categories, we're having an increased time of decontaminating our trucks. So everything's getting wiped down a little bit more than it typically was. It's not a big group, but it's adding about 10 minutes to each call.
I guess the point, the question I was really had was, did we already ramp up and add people?
Well, when you say already, we didn't add until this event started.
Right.
And then as the event was going, we had, we together in unified command, came together and said, once Beaufort County has its first positive COVID case, then we're going to add a truck, because the data was showing that you're going to double, and then that double's going to double and so on. So that was the projections we were working on.
Okay, and that hasn't happened.
We did add the truck because we had our positive case. The projections, we started to see the doubling happen. I think it was originally about every four to five days. It wasn't every 48 hours. So in the second week, we went ahead and pulled the trigger, which added a second truck. After one week or 10 days, somewhere in there, we pulled that back out. So we have added one truck that is stayed, it's still in service right now.
And if you pulled that back, would you need, you wouldn't need those people, right?
If we pull that back, we're, can we answer the calls without that truck? Yes, it would be a delayed response.
Carney's asking, do you mean, could you take those two people that were on that truck and fill the hole you got right now? That's not.
Oh, if that, I'm sorry, I'm misunderstanding where you're coming from. So we're, those are overtime, we're paying people overtime to put that truck in service. So if we don't, if I don't get approval for this, then we're going to fill this position with overtime. We try to supplement with part-time. We have a very low part-time number, because part-time availability has to be put out way in advance to, we're in competition. So if you're asking, could these people fill this position, then the answer is kind of yes, it's going to be overtime. I mean, that's how I'm going to fill.
Well, it's overtime now.
It is as of this morning.
Yeah. No, I mean, it's overtime for the one at the community college.
Yes, but that's under, I look at it as two different responses. I'm asking for normal operation. That's under still our COVID response, under our state of emergency, which is going to be funded, while we're under state of emergency, will be funded 75% by the federal government, 25% by the state.
Dathers, Commissioner Dathers, you had a question?
Yeah, I'm going to, I've been listening to you, and it's my opinion, with what's happened and what's going to happen, I foresee that we're going to be in a very deep recession in a number of months, and hopefully, we don't raise taxes, but people are going to have to pay their taxes regardless, because we're very good at collecting taxes in this county. So my opinion is, we don't know what the future is going to hold as far as the pandemic goes. We do know we're going to, we're in a recession now. Technically, in a few months, we'll be in that recession, and it depends on whether we're going to be in a great recession or not, like just 18 years ago, 14 years ago. Now, my opinion is, if we have to run the trucks, we continue to do it by overtime and not put on another head, we've got to pay that entire package, and it make it more difficult to get rid of that person later. So I would vote to sustain our level of service now at overtime if necessary, but I would suggest the commissioners do the same, at least consider it before we put on another head right now, because if we go into a great recession, we could be one of those counties that's going to have to lay off a lot of employees. We got, we're rich in employees right now, and we could have to lay a lot of them off in order not to raise taxes in a huge manner, because we're just not, we're just not bringing it in, bringing the money in, not getting it from sales tax. A lot of things are going to happen in just a number of months, I'm predicting. I hope I'm wrong, but things look dire in the coming months.
Okay, time to vote. All of those in favor, please raise your right hand. All of those opposed? Four three, motion passes. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Hedgepath. Christina?
Wouldn't want Christina to be upset with me.
Good evening.
First item on the agenda this evening for me to give a report on is the jail doors The North Carolina Divisions of Prisons has extended through May 17th the April 7th moratorium on the acceptance of offenders from county jails. Currently, Beaufort County inmates are being housed in Craven County, Cabarrus County, Onslow County, while a few are still being housed in Central Prison for safekeeping purposes. Also, North Carolina courts have been postponed until at least June, other than a few selected immediate needs issues. Work that was completed in April, select plumbing system repairs have been made, the control room layout has been determined, abandoned camera and computer wiring has been removed, a new HVAC unit has been installed in the nurses station. And as far as Montgomery Technologies, which is the main contractor for this project, the staff mobilized, safety assessment was completed, required ventilation equipment was ordered and delivered to the site. The demolition of slider controls and removal of bar doors has been completed in cell blocks E, F, and G, and we have received delivery of 12 hollow metal door frames. Work that is scheduled for the month of May is to continue addressing existing plumbing issues, install epoxy flooring in the holding cell. MTS personnel will run conduit for doors, install the hollow metal doors and frames, also install the interior frames and doors, and determine the exact location of the door controls in the storeroom. I do need to make you aware that MTS personnel is not currently working this week, the week of May 3rd, but they will return on May 11th. Again, personnel came in a couple of weeks ago, and they've been working six and seven days. The personnel are from Texas, so they're away from their families, so they work really long hours while they are here, and then they take a break and go back. Regarding the information that is included in your agenda packet, MTS is cautiously optimistic about the delivery of the hardware for our facility. As noted in the letter in the agenda packet, the company providing the hard work is continuing to operate, but may or can or will experience delays based upon the COVID-19. I'd like to draw attention to specifically one paragraph of this letter. According to Coastal Detention, which is, again, the hardware provider, they outline that specifically interruptions to supply chain logistics, medical visits for precautionary testing, banning of certain outside visitors and repair technicians, and the basic inherent human distractions brought on by risk, uncertainty, and fear. Please understand that while the coastal entities are fully operational, we are not operating at peak 100% efficiencies. This understood, be aware and tolerant of the fact that in some cases, the company will be operating at the outer limits of our standard lead times. I have had discussions with MTS. Again, like I said, they are cautiously optimistic that they will continue to receive the material on a timely basis, but again, this is something that's an unknown for everyone. The supplier is located in a different area of the country, so the cases, the number of cases and the impact of COVID-19 may be different in that location than it is with us in Beaufort County. I just want to let you be aware of that. And of course, as always, staff will continue to monitor and to make adjustments as we need in order to continue pushing this project forward. Are there any questions?
Any questions?
Yes. I'd like to tour the jail.
I will contact Lieutenant Bryan or Chief Latham and determine the best time to go in. Do you have a certain time that's available?
No, it just depends on when I can get in based on what my schedule is.
Okay. This week, and I do not want to speak for the sheriff's office, but with the contractors not working in there this week, it's actually a prime time to go in there because the safety concerns would be minimized.
Commissioner Waters?
Mr. Chairman, I had asked Christina if she would take me through, and we did that this afternoon, and what I've asked her to do is work with the clerk and try to get all of the people that are on the jail committee in there this week, give them the opportunity, and she has agreed to do that. So hopefully, every jail committee member will have a chance, because now is the ideal time, because there's nobody in there.
Again, I'll contact the sheriff's office, and we'll do our best to accommodate that. And the sheriff's office has been very accommodating, working around the inmates that have to be processed and held until they can determine transports.
Yes.
One thing I'd like to point out is, we only have 34 people incarcerated from Beaufort County right now. Admittedly, they're not in the jail, but if, you know, what I've been saying, this, this verifies what my position has been for a long time. You don't need a new jail. You need to manage the jail that you have, and if we can manage it down to 34 right now, we can certainly manage it below the 87 that we are permitted for.
Okay, you want to talk about the Seaboard Building?
Yes, sir. Second item on the agenda is the replacement of the chiller at the Seaboard Building. The Seaboard Building cooling system is currently powered by one 50-ton chiller, which was installed in 1996. There have been continued repeated problems with this unit over the past few years. Many repairs have been made to buy time, but there continue to be failures. When one circuit of the unit is down, the second circuit is unable to adequately cool the building, which causes a complete closure of the building. The existing 24-year-old condenser coils are badly damaged due to age and exposure and need replacement. The restrictions in the coil will lead to compressors failing again. The controls have also aged out and failed on a frequent basis. The cost to repair only the control, the coils and controls is approximately $35,000, which would then also require future replacement of compressors costing an additional $25,000. Therefore, staff recommends the replacement of the entire chiller for approximately $80,000. Pricing was received from various manufacturers, and the York chiller was the lowest cost with a quick ship, ship date, which will allow installation to be complete before the hottest time of the year. No additional funds are required. However, approval of a budget amendment is needed to, in order to transfer funds.
Is there a second?
I'll second. Excuse me, I'll second the motion.
Discussion. All of those in favor, raise your right hand. All of those opposed? Seven zero, motion pass.
The final item that I have for you this evening is the recommendation to award a construction contract for the courthouse exterior renovation. The replacement of windows and the repair of damaged exterior of the courthouse was included in the capital project budget for fiscal year 2020. The county retained the professional services of architect Earl Warren to assist inspecting and determining the extent of the renovation needed. During the investigation, it was determined that the installation of the existing windows was not standard. The decay of the building was extensive, and the cost of repairing comparable to replacement. Asbestos testing also revealed the presence of asbestos in the window glazing compound and caulking at and around the windows. Mr. Warren prepared construction plans detailing a full exterior renovation, including power washing, replacement of all decayed fascia and soffit, painting of all exterior woodwork, doors, and metal, replacement of the two-story front entrance, replacement of rear doors, and recoding concrete entrances. Work will also include removal and disposal of all asbestos material that would be affected by the project. The advertisement for bids was issued on March 18th, 2020, with six bids received on April 16th. The low bidder is AR Chesson Construction of Williamson in the amount of $532,000. Attached to this documentation is the bid tabulation, which shows the bids of all six bidders, and it also shows the proposed elevations of the courthouse. The fiscal year 2020 Capital Improvement Fund includes $418,000 for work in the courthouse, with a balance currently available of $328,910. It is anticipated that the total construction budget for the exterior renovation will be $574,560, which would include the AR Chesson contract plus third-party asbestos testing and additional supporting work. In order to take full advantage of lower overall project costs, it is recommended that $245,650 be transferred from fund balance to the fiscal year 2020 Facility Capital Improvement Fund to allow a full award to AR Chesson at this time, in lieu of awarding it in phases. The proposed fiscal year 2021 budget will include returning these funds back to fund balance. Therefore, the recommendation is to approve the attached, the resolution as well as the attached budget amendment awarding construction to AR Chesson in the amount of $532,000. Basically, as you can tell, when we did the investigation of the courthouse, there was extensive decay, more than what was originally thought that was there. Also, when we looked at the windows of the courthouse, for those of you that have been on the board for a few years, you'll recall, there was discussion that we thought that because the windows were a standard residential size, that for once, we would have a very budget-friendly project. So what was budgeted was more along the lines of what a standard replacement window would be, almost typical in a residential, because that is the, that size window. However, when the casing was taken off of the different windows in the courthouse, and we did that so that we could actually tell what means that the windows would need to be removed, it was not a typical normal installation. So the way that it was built and having to replace the stools, we went through different options where we were looking at even doing, not doing a full window replacement and only replacing the paint of the window and still keeping the surrounding casings. That did not seem to be a good long-term approach, in my opinion, because that was still leaving a lot of wood that would be exposed to the elements. And also, when you start removing a portion of a window, when you're dealing with wood that has been in place for 50 years, it's either wet, which is when there's rot and it needs to be replaced, or it's extremely dry, which means when you're trying to separate, it cracks. And so then you end up having to replace a lot of the, a lot of the wood that you're actually trying to retain. Based upon the architect's recommendation, our maintenance coordinator's recommendation, what I saw, as well as also in discussions with contractors, it just seemed that the most economical path to move forward was to do a full window replacement, to take out the entire casing and everything, and then to go back with a vinyl all-weather window. There will be still a little bit of wood that will be there that will have to paint, but it will be very minimal. And again, the, the fascia and the soffit that has to be repaired, that will also be wood. And so we will have to, future budgets, you will see, probably seven years from now, I'll be standing here asking you for money to paint the exterior of the courthouse. Because once we do this renovation, we want to continue to upkeep and not allow it to get back into the condition that it is now. But again, the, the condition of the courthouse, it was in worse shape than what we thought, and due to the construction means, there was additional cost, which is why we're asking for this budget amendment. And again, to remind you that this fund was set up in order to do these capital projects, and so it's $575,000 per year. So what we were asking at this May meeting is to basically give us a loan until the July 1st. In order to do that, it will allow to do the full award to AR Chesson.
Motion to approve. Is there a second?
I'll, I'll second the motion.
Discussion?
I have one request.
Yes, sir.
I would like a copy of the architect's specifications for paint.
Yes, sir. Would you like the entire book or just, just the paint spec section? Okay.
I know some of the senior members of the commissioners may know this answer, but, but I don't. When you, when you have a business within the county of Beaufort, and they're in the bid process, and in this case, they're the next one up.
Yes, sir.
Do we have any tolerance or any policy for, for handling that? This one is 10%.
I understand, yes, sir.
It's 10%.
No, sir. It is my understanding, and Manager Alligood may correct me or add to this, but the procurement laws of North Carolina do not allow local governments in order to place a preference on local vendors. That has been done in the past, but current law does not allow that.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Commissioner Brad Holmes?
Does, as I recall from maybe my first meeting, we approved an architect, budget for an architect to do this?
Yes, sir.
And that was a percent of the total?
Yes, sir.
So that means his bill's going to go up another $10,000, too?
His, he is fee-based. His fee is based off the total construction cost, yes, sir.
Okay.
It's 8%.
So, but that's not included in this? Or is it?
The, the total anticipated cost does include that. Would I have the total cost of the $574? So yes.
Any more discussion? Time to vote. All of those in favor, please raise your right hand. All of those opposed? Five two, motion passes.
Thank you.
Anita?
I ain't gonna die from the pee in a rain.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening to everyone.
Good evening.
I'd like to start tonight with just a little bit of a financial presentation. Don't have much new information to offer, share with you tonight relating to that, but I do want to let you know that we are beginning to see some of the federal COVID stimulus funds flow down to us. We actually are in receipt of $140,000 thus far. One of those items was already on your consent agenda earlier. The Health Department received $72,000, and also an additional $68,000 was received by the General Fund. On Saturday, the General Assembly allocated $150 million in direct funding to 97 of the 100 counties. And we do anticipate that we will be receiving part of that funding. In fact, I know we will. We're one of the 97 counties that will receive some of that funding. Not sure quite yet what the amount of that funding will be of that $150 million, or the stipulations on those funds. So we'll be learning more about that in the coming weeks and days. So that's good news that we're, we're starting to see some of that stimulus, stimulus money flow into the county coffers. The first thing I have for you tonight on the agenda, and not sure why this didn't make it on the consent agenda rather than a decision item. It's really straightforward. It's where the county is in receipt of $68,136 of stimulus funds related to COVID-19, and these are to all Medicare providers that have received a portion of the funds based on their Medicare billings for 2019. So as far as the county is concerned, we're talking about EMS and Health Department. They are the two departments within the county that do Medicare billings. We would like to use these funds to cover the emergency protective measures that have already been put in place over the last several years. And those emergency protective surgery, services amount to $85,745. So it goes a pretty good ways in covering that amount, $68,000 of that. But it does leave the county paying a small portion of that until we receive additional funds for the stimulus relief. So I have before you tonight a budget amendment in the amount of $68,136 that recognizes that revenue coming from the federal government to the state of North Carolina, down to Beaufort County. And we're going to allocate that, as I mentioned, in the General Fund to cover the emergency protective measures that we have put in place thus far. So I need, need a motion, please?
Motion to approve. Is there a second? Got a second? Discussion. Time to vote. All of those in favor, raise your right hand. Seven zero, motion passes.
Okay, thank you. The next item I have for you tonight is the fiscal year 1920 audit contract, and it is that time of year again where we are ready to award that contract. If you'll remember, last year, we actually sent out RFPs, and we were trying to solicit bids from auditors that could do our audit for a five-year period. It was our intent to have a five-year relationship with, with whichever auditor we, we chose. And Thompson, Price, Scott, and Adams CPAs ultimately won that bid. We were very pleased with their services this past year on the first year of the audit, and we recommend awarding this year's audit to them again at the cost of $53,750. And that amount is currently budgeted, so no additional appropriation is going to be needed.
Motion to approve.
A second?
Got a second? Got a second? Discussion?
Anita, is that, is that, how much of an increase is that?
It's actually, they actually came in flat all five years. Their bid was 53.7 for five years.
Okay, thank you.
The next thing I have for you tonight is, oh, I'm sorry. Did we not vote?
No.
Sorry.
Those ones went so well, I kept on going.
The next item I have for you is on page 222. We are the lucky guys that got selected by the State Treasurer's Office for an elders pension audit this year. So we are one of 49 local government employers across the state, different counties and municipalities. I think there's about maybe 500 of us in all, 100 counties and maybe 400 cities and towns. So they selected 49 of us, so we got about a 10% chance every year of being picked, and this was our lucky year. So this, of course, is outside the scope of our annual audit, and it does require a separate engagement. And so I reached out to our current auditor, and they've agreed to perform this audit service for us for a price of $4,950. And what they will do is they will come in, they will view all of our payroll records and reports for this current year, and they'll give an, an opinion on whether our data that we've reported into the retirement system is accurate, materially accurate. So these funds were not appropriated. We had no way of knowing that we would be selected for this. So I am asking for an appropriation from contingency in the amount of $4,950 to cover the cost of this pension audit.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion. We approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Got a second? Any discussion? All of those in favor, raise your right hand. Seven zero, motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Whoopsie, whoopsie. I don't do much cleaning at home, so that's probably why I forgot. There we go.
Alicia, Amanda, no, you know how to do it.
I'll go on it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board, the item you have in front of you on page 228 is the Juvenile Crime Prevention Committee match. This year, the state is pushing down, it's a total amount of $185,624. There is a local match of 10%, $18,563 that the board appropriates for that. This is more money than last year. Last year was $167,628. The additional money this year is because of the Raise the Age Law that went into effect. You'll see on page 229, the allocation of funding that JCPC is recommending, and then you see your 10% match. So that recommendation is for approval, and answer any questions you may have.
So move. Is there a second?
I seconded it.
All right. Any discussion? All of those in favor, please raise your right hand. Seven zero, motion pass.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Typically, as y'all recall, you typically do that at a, at a breakfast you have with them, the Knights of the Church. And of course, that was canceled this year because of the COVID-19 restrictions. Second item you have is on page 230. This is a petition for road addition by NC DOT to add Cordgrass Point Road and Fernwood Court to the state highway system. These roads are both in the Bridgewater North subdivision. You'll see all the attached information from DOT. You'll see the petition from the property owners. You'll also see the secondary road addition report where the DOT goes in and looks at the road and says, yes, it, it meets the criteria. No, it doesn't meet the criteria. The division engineer says that it does, and they are willing to take it on. On page 234, you'll see the resolution that the board is required to pass and send to DOT to allow them to say that you're okay with them adding that to the state system. Obviously, it's not something that we pay for. Once it gets on the state system, there's nothing to think. of county roads anymore. So it is obviously a great benefit to the property owners to get that on the state system. So we would recommend your approval, and be glad to answer any questions you may have.
So moved.
Is there a second? Discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to disclose that I have a son and also have a daughter with lots in that subdivision. I do not see this as a conflict.
Anyone discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those are seven zero. Motion passes. Thank you, Brian.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Richardson?
The gentleman from the Hamilton dad, we have now for more than six months asked the sheriff to come and give a report on this, and the sheriff refuses to show up and cooperate with commissioners in any way. There was a report put on my desk, and I'd just like to ask the clerk, this is headlined the clerk, and it looks like that you sent a report to Charlie.
No, sir. I had originally sent him, if you look at page two, I'd sent him a request to, your request that he appear today. And then I had put the reasons why he was supposed to be here today, or what you were requesting. And he just, it looks like he simply took those requests and answered underneath them.
Okay. Well, it says, yeah, Commissioner Richardson, he just added to this. So the sheriff still refuses to make an appearance in front of the commissioners. And I notice he's complaining in here that the sheriff would like an update on the county project, on jail doors. He has not received an update from the county since the contractors have been on site. Maybe he needs to come to a commissioner meeting, and he might find out what's going on in his department. He says, if I understand this thing correctly, and again, this was just presented to me when I sat down for this meeting, so I have not had the chance to study it. But he says that the group in out west has finished their work, and that he's reported, part written report to Mr. Allagood for review and distribution to Commissioner Richardson and commissioners. I don't know about seeing that.
We just got into that committee.
Oh, okay. All right. Okay.
We'll send it out to everybody by email. I would, I would, I would say to you to please, and I know you will, just, it includes some of the information's graphic, and I would just hope that that would, for the family, that may not be.
Use some judgment.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Well, that's fine. When I see the report, we'll know what we need to do. I'm chairman of that committee, so we'll probably call it a committee report once we see the report. My understanding is the forensic information, the samples that were collected are now going to go to Florida, and Florida's going to take a shot and see what, see what they can do with this. Again, I'm disappointed that the sheriff refuses to make an appearance in front of the commissioners, and I'm also disappointed that he sends his mouthpiece. He's never, he never comes himself. You know, the people that voted for this guy deserve to see him, and they deserve to see him cooperate in some fashion with commissioners. So I'm ready to move on unless there are questions.
Can move on.
You know, I have the same report. Now, let me emphasize to you, the game that the sheriff has played, it's a game of disinformation, because agenda requests are submitted by me at least by the Monday before the meeting on the following Monday. So what does the sheriff do? He waits till a few minutes before the meeting, and then he gives us information that is hard for us to digest. This is at best disingenuous. The sheriff has, I've accused him in the past, and I continue to accuse him of withholding public information, covering up items, making statements like, I can give whatever I want to to my employees for their personal use.
On and on this goes. So be aware that there is a, there's friction between the sheriff, his high spending, and his magnificent ways that he thinks that he can operate in Beaufort County. So I haven't had time on this particular item to address the jail population and how he's staffing and what he's doing. So there's not a report on that. I'll give you a report on this report a month from now. And then he will give me another report, because I will request the same thing at like 3:30 in the afternoon before the meeting, which I'll get placed on my desk over here. This is, this is pettiness, and that's all it is. Immaturity. So I'm ready to move on.
Okay.
Oh, this, we're now to the resolution. There are two resolutions that I have in this document tonight that involve reopening Beaufort County. I think you've heard a lot of things tonight about this. Those of us that sit in the positions that I'm sitting in as elected officials have a responsibility to the citizens of Beaufort County that we represent to protect their interest. We are sworn to uphold and defend the Constitution of the United States, and North Carolina for that matter, even though it may not be said, it probably is said in the oath. I've taken it so many times, I should be able to recite it, but I can't. So because of that responsibility, and because we are here to protect the people of Beaufort County from the abuse of higher officials, this is a part of our job. It is not our job to agree with and acquiesce to higher officials when our, when our citizens are being damaged. To that end, I have two charts that are in here, and I have extra copies if people in the audience want them. One of them is the North Carolina influenza data. This is a chart that's put out by the state of North Carolina on the incidence of influenza in the state. And if you go to this website, it's real easy to get to, just type in influenza in North Carolina, you will get these charts. They're kept up monthly. The red line on the chart that we have tonight shows that the incidence of all influences, including the coronavirus, coronavirus, are back to a normal level as they are every year. And there's three years of data presented on this chart, this year and two more. If you go to the site, you can go back about 20 years and look at this. You will see that in North Carolina, I think, my opinion is because of the weather more than anything else, that the flu season always ends the last week in April. Nothing has changed. Nothing is different, in spite of all of the magnificent reports that we have had from people, that this thing is going to run through the summer, and half the country is going to die. I'm exaggerating. But it basically comes down to, you're going to die. You need to listen to me, because we're going to lock you in. That's false, because this chart proves that it's false. There's another chart here that the health director put up a while ago, and that chart says that about 85% of the people who have passed away from this virus are between the ages of 70 and, or 70 plus. Most of them are 80 plus. And if you look at the data on these people, you know, I'm in that group. If you look at the data on these people, you will find that most of them have a compromised health system. Well, that is, they have diabetes, they have high blood pressure, they have organ problems, they have something. These are the people that we need to be protecting, because these are the people at risk. All of the other people that have tested positive for this have, some of them didn't even know they had it. Most of them didn't know they had it. It's, the coronavirus is no different than any other virus in its intensity and the way it affects a person. The difference is, if you're at risk and you're above 70 years old, it's going to have a tremendous burden on your respiratory system. That's the danger from this particular virus. Those are the facts. You can go out and talk all the stuff. I hear all these inflammatory statements made in the press that, you know, you're all going to die and all these sorts of things. We've done a good job in, if you will, flattening the curve, and that's where we are. The number of cases that we've had in Beaufort County has only been 19.
22.
Is it 22? Okay, 22 today. And no one has died. As the health director stated, there's only been two people that have been on breathing assistance machines. So the disease up till now is practically nonexistent. We're at the end of the flu season. So why are we continuing to lock down on this particular disease? The cost to our citizens. We have people that are going out of business. I talked to an accountant yesterday. They said, look, we've got three people that are shutting their business down because they can't afford to reopen. Businesses that are running without much capital behind them in reserve are going to have great difficulty reopening. And that's most of the small businesses. We have a lot of people that are out of work. The people that are being hurt by this are not the people who own property, who own stocks and bonds, even though they've gone down in value, have rental properties, other sources of income. They are, they're not being hurt. Anything like the people who are having to work today to use the money to buy food for their family. They're living week to week, and that is a lot of people in Beaufort County. These are people that I'm concerned about. These are people who have children. These are young couples. These are not people who've had enough time in their life to accumulate wealth. Wealth being more than what you need to live on. So that's why I have this particular resolution. And I'm going to burden the commissioners, because I think the public needs to hear it, at least those of them that, that watch the, the commission meetings needs to be documented, instead of saying, well, what did the guy say? He said it's going to open up Beaufort County. There are two resolutions. They both go to two different subjects. Resolution lifting the economic shutdown and returning business and related activities to normal, that is, in Beaufort County. Whereas on March 27, 2020, Governor Cooper issued Executive Order 121, shutting down major parts of commerce and citizen assembly. And whereas Governor Cooper has extended his order to May 8, and actually the day beyond that. And whereas there has not been a COVID-19 pandemic significantly reaching the purported magnitude to justify the order within the state of North Carolina, Beaufort County reporting no deaths as of April 25, and 22 cases in all, with only six currently active, while 13 cases are classified as recovered. And it's actually more than that are recovered now. That's old data. Whereas Governor Cooper has not presented a reasonable plan to reopen our state and Beaufort County. Whereas the Beaufort County commissioners reject the one-size-fits-all nature of these executive orders. And whereas historical data produced by the state of North Carolina shows the influenza season is effectively over by the last week in April of each year. And whereas the stated objective in issuing this and subsequent orders is to flatten the curve of infections so as not to overburden the healthcare system. And whereas there has been an unusually low demand on healthcare systems in Beaufort County, and in fact, my system has laid off hundreds of healthcare providers, and many citizens of Beaufort County have been denied non-virus, non-virus healthcare procedures that, if continued, can be expected to cause irreparable harm to them. And whereas there is much financial suffering, religious worship denial, and loss of other services to the citizens of Beaufort County. And whereas there is a high risk of bankruptcy, and extended hardship among the citizens and businesses of Beaufort County driving unemployment to extreme highs. And whereas the population has made known to members of the Beaufort County Board of Commissioners their concerns about their lack of work, loss of income, and the severe abuse of their constitutional rights. And whereas Governor Cooper has not fully complied with the requirements of North Carolina Constitution and the various laws of the state of North Carolina, creating unreasonable and unenforceable repressive conditions and pain on the citizens of North Carolina. And whereas the orders of Governor Cooper have severely reduced revenues to the state treasury, causing a future tax hardship on all citizens. And whereas orders by Governor Cooper have placed all citizens of North Carolina in financial and general welfare peril. And whereas the Constitution of both the state of North Carolina and the federal government grant certain inalienable rights to all citizens, and these rights have been abused. Therefore, be it resolved effective immediately, lockdown orders by Governor Cooper are deemed null and void in the county of Beaufort, and all citizens of Beaufort County are free to resume their activities as they were before March 27, 2020, with the following advisories. Apply and use the recommendations issued by the health departments and other agencies for your personal protection. All persons diagnosed with the COVID-19 virus are to self-quarantine until determined not to be a danger of infecting other persons under penalty of the quarantine laws of the state of North Carolina. Be it further resolved that the Beaufort County Health Department is authorized and directed to monitor the status and trends of COVID-19 cases in Beaufort County, and to report any statistically significant changes on the status and trends of COVID-19 infections to the Beaufort County Commission, which reserves the prerogative to revise this resolution as may be needed at any point in the future. And be it further resolved, no funds or employees of Beaufort County shall be used to defy, suborn, or otherwise render this resolution impaired in any way under penalty of discharge for employment without benefit of additional warning. The clerk is directed to disseminate this resolution to the office of the governor, the members of the General Assembly, and all counties in North Carolina, adopted this fourth day of May 2020. So what I would like to do, Mr. Chairman, if it's acceptable, is to take up this resolution and then go to the second resolution.
That's fine.
That's a motion.
I'll second that motion.
Okay. Discussion?
Mr. Chairman, may I speak?
Sure.
This is the first time this nation has had a pandemic in my lifetime. I'm 65 years old. I'm at that age where one would be at risk as well. The whole idea of a pandemic is scary for a lot of people. It's scary for the women folk in my family. I know I've suffered through it for the last six, seven weeks before having a comaraderie, even be here tonight not wearing a mask. However, having said that, the response in North Carolina, which the governor took it upon himself to issue an executive order, and Hood is right, it may be an illegal executive order. We don't know for sure. We do know that in some respects it is unconstitutional. But we have, his executive order does not exhibit a proportional response. He has single-handedly shut down the economy effectively in North Carolina. We are in dire straits, not only from a business perspective, but soon from a governmental perspective, when we try to exact tax income from these folks who have no money. And what's that going to do to our government? We're not going to be able to respond in a variety of ways that we would like to be able to respond, to provide the services our citizens so need. So, understanding this, and understanding that we do need to social distance, we do need to follow certain protocols, but we need to do this in a measured manner, and we need to do it immediately. The executive order was a blunt instrument. Then while it may have flattened the curve, it has destroyed many people's lives. And the ancillary costs to that destruction, we do not know yet. There will be more suicides, there will be more domestic violence, there will be people losing everything. The government's response through the SBA has been inefficient, and it has been wrong. Many people that need the money are not getting it in favor of the bankers giving people that they favor big dollars. People that I will argue do not qualify for this money. So we've got a problem. We've got a government that wants to help. We've got the middleman, and they're taking. We got people that are losing their livelihoods, wondering, who's going to help me? Well, I'm going to suggest that we commissioners do our very best tonight to help those folks, if only for a matter of days, if only to send a message to the General Assembly to reel this governor in, which they can do. They have the right to rewrite the general statute where he believes he has the authority to, to execute these executive orders. to execute these executive orders. And they have the right to do that. Now, he can come and veto that, and then there's going to need to be a two-thirds majority to override that veto. But this is an election issue. This is a political issue. And we heard tonight earlier from someone that politics should not be involved, that clinicians should decide how we run our government. Now, I'm going to say to you, we were elected, not the clinicians. We were elected to do what's best for the people, not the scientists, okay? So if we have a society where nobody gets sick, and we lose our society because our economy goes to hell in a handbasket, supply chains are destroyed, and the next thing you know, our adversaries are at our door, taking us all hostage. If that's what you want, fine. But I want to live in a society where we're free, free to win, free to fail, and free to die if we have to. That's the patriotic thing to do. Thank you.
Let me say something. I don't think there's anybody here tonight would like to see Beaufort County open any faster than I do. Couple of things that I want to mention. Spent quite, at least a week on the phone, it seems like, talking to the business owners against their feelings. There's a lot of the, as you say, the fear of the unknown out there. It's amazing. I thought, well, they'll be ready to jump, but they're scared, because they can, at this point, get into this thing and then lose it all. And so then I looked around and did a little research, and I says, who else has decided to break the law? Because the law is stay at home. Gaston, well, whatever. Gaston County, they decide they're going to do it. Well, now they're backpedaling, saying that, no, you can't do that. So there's one that made an attempt out there. Secondly, the six counties here in eastern North Carolina has asked us to join them. And either a resolution or a letter to the governor, and doing what I'm asking them to do, empower the county governments with decision-making authority as we deem necessary. Nobody knows Beaufort County better than we do. But currently, the law is, and I don't think you, I don't want to break the law. I don't want that liability. So Frankie, I'll turn it over to you.
Well, I just liked Jerry, some of his comments. I've listened to people for the last week, and I would say that I get, it's almost split, the people that want to continue to stay closed, and the ones that want to open up. You know, when I was in the banking business, I saw small business, and I saw the stress that they went under. Most of these small business owners have pledged their house as collateral, if they have a bank loan or an SBA loan. So I mean, they've got more to lose than just the storefront in downtown Washington. If we were to approve this tonight, it's my understanding that the city council voted 100% unanimous to abide by the order set out by the governor. So action is not going to affect anything inside of municipality if they want to take a different approach. I mean, we don't trump what happens in the city limits of Washington. The other comment that I'm getting from beauticians is that, you know, they can't open even if we do that. I mean, they've got a state board that can take their license. I mean, do you understand that? We also have restaurants that have license, beer license, liquor license. We don't issue those. Who issues that? So I mean, I understand that people out there are really frustrated. And that's a small business. The other group that's calling me, and that I'm concerned about, is just like Ms. Taylor that was in here tonight, is on the churches. If the governor can come up with a number of people that can be at Walmart, based on retail or square footage, surely the people that have the megachurch, that they ought to be able to come up with a form that says how many people can meet. That's not in Phase 1, that's in Phase 2 of his plan. So the churches are going to be in Phase 2, which, based on the proposed calendar, would be two weeks, which would be May the 24th. You know, I'm concerned about liability, and I'm concerned about breaking the law. Now, my mother, if she were living, would be watching this, not now, but later. And the last thing she would do is say, Frankie, you need to break the law. I know that you've broken it in the past, because I've caught you doing it, you know, speeding or whatever. But I will not support this tonight and violate what the governor's mandate is. I don't think it's right. I don't think it's right when I cannot go to Russell's and buy a shirt, but I can go to Walmart and I can buy a shirt. I don't like it when I can't go to A&W Sales in Bell Haven and buy a patio and chairs, but I can go to Lowe's and do it. I don't like it when people can go in Speedway and buy lottery tickets. Gas is a necessity. By God, just lock the door. Tell people they got to use a credit card, okay? When you go to Walmart, it's essential, their pharmacy and their grocery store. But they would have roped everything else over there. I mean, I think like our representative said, you know, we've got a lot of things that happen, and they shouldn't have happened the way they did. And I realize it's not a law, but I will not vote to do, to break that. I feel very confident, based on what I saw and what I've heard, based on the conference, press conference that they had today, that we're fairly close to being able to open Phase 1 come Friday. So I mean, I'm loud and clear, I hear what people say, but I can tell you, this is not a political game. We got people in this country that attacks our president, and they want to call everything political. And we got the same group, we flip-flop, and I'm a Republican, and now, we're trying to attack their governor. As elected officials, we all have business to do, and we all have to make sure that what we do is right. Businesspeople are not ready to open, if it's a restaurant, they're not ready to open yet, because they're telling me they need to get with our health department. They need to know what's expected of the public. Because the consumers are going to determine who goes in the restaurant, they're going to determine who goes in Russell's, they're going to determine where everybody goes. I'm 71 years old, and I want the health department to tell me to wash my hands and wear a mask. But excuse my French, I don't want somebody to tell me that I can't take a trip and I can't do something. I've told my kids that if I die tomorrow because of this virus, I've had a good life. And I've taken a lot of risks, and I've done some things, and I'll say this publicly, that I'm ashamed of, and God or an angel or somebody was on my shoulder. And I don't need somebody to hold my hand in this. I want somebody to tell me how to be safe and what I need to do. So, but I will vote against it, because I will not vote to break this law or break the rule.
Commissioner Reboz?
Boy, this is one I really struggle with. I'm a data-type of guy. And I looked at the data, and you got 22 people that have contracted the illness here. You got two to three that were hospitalized, you got zero deaths. 60% of those deaths across the nation are from nursing homes. The 2017, 18 flu and influenza that, in Beaufort County, we had nine deaths. We got zero on this. We had 118 hospitalized. We got two to three right now. So by the numbers, I responded openly to people saying that we've got to move forward. But then as this thing got published, and I started getting, well, my inbox on my phone or voicemails full, it was 95% against it, us opening. 95% against it. All my emails were, with the exception of two, were against it. And then I started talking, as other people have, to businesses and the mayors, and I'll second what's been said, that the businesses aren't ready to open, and we're not ready to assist them to be open. We heard that from Jim tonight. He's not ready. He offered to have them use these rooms to communicate, to cut tape, videotape, so we can educate the businesses, okay? He's not ready. He doesn't have the PPEs to do the testing that he's saying that businesses need to have it done if they have a sick employee. We are physically not ready to move down this path, and if in fact, the state decides to go ahead and open on Monday or Friday, we're going to go to Phase 1. We're starting down that road. So I added it all up, I too am bothered by the constitutional issues that are involved in this. But as I picked up one of the articles, it says, worth pointing out, and this is from the, is it Robinson.com? Says, it's worth pointing out that emergencies often test the boundaries of government power. In a recent National Review online article, a former federal prosecutor, McCarthy, warned about the limits of law. The history of this country is one of ceding authority to the chief executive, to an extent commensurate with the public sense of real threat, particularly lethal threat in a mass scale. Later, Congress and the courts push back, but only once the perception of peril is ebbed. And I think that's what's going to happen with the state legislature. They're talking about pushing back already. So I am I am disturbed about the whole thing. Either way, but I, I'll quote one of the Fox analysts, okay, who said, if you're going to score a touchdown and you're one yard from the end zone, don't drop the ball. So I'm going to tell you, I can't support it.
Commissioner Langley?
Okay, and one of the first things I want to say is, and I think Commissioner Waters said it best, all these businesses inside of the city of Washington, the Board of Commissioners has no jurisdiction over them, and the city has already voted unanimously that they're going to follow the governor's plan. And I will also go on and say that that has been my contention the entire time, and all my life I have been in the people business. I've been in public service, either as a deputy sheriff, probation officer, and now as a pastor. And so people are extremely important to me. As a matter of fact, people are more important to me than money is. And I'm not saying that for everybody else, I'm just saying that's just where Jerry Langley is. And one of the things about just simply opening up as of right now, there is no plan. You just simply cannot open the county up and, let's say, we'll just get in wherever we fit in. That is not good. If you were saying that you had an actual way of doing this, it would be something I would consider. But as far as I'm concerned right now, I'm happy and content with the governor's plan. It is the only plan that I have seen, and everybody who's called me, text me, or emailed me, I've told them from the jump that I would be voting no tonight, and that is what I'm doing. Thank you.
Commissioner Booz, do you have anything?
You just want me to summarize it all up?
If you will.
I will. Well, to start with, I concur with what Commissioner Langley said. From day one, I wasn't going to vote for this resolution. And I'm going to tell you the reason why. We got a split house and a split senate, and if the governor was all wrong, they'd have stopped them before now. And when I got elected the first time, city council, then I came to a county commissioner, the first pledge that I made is that I wouldn't play politics with folks' lives. And this is exactly what we are doing. We are playing politics with folks' lives. The only thing you heard is Governor Cooper, Governor Cooper, Governor Cooper. You hadn't heard one of them say tonight, these people ought to take some Clorox and put in the vein. It's been Governor Cooper, Governor Cooper. And until he loses, he's the chief executive officer of this state. And I intend to vote no, no, no.
Commissioner Richardson?
You know, all that's necessary for tyranny to prevail is for good men to do nothing. And it looks like that's where we're going tonight. The Constitution has been severely violated, and people sitting around waiting on a government official to determine what happens in their lives in the number, in six months from now, you guys are going to look back, it may take a year, and you're going to say, we should have done something. Because so much of our government, and so much of our Constitution has been violated severely, that unless we stand up, there's nobody to stand up for the people that are going to lose a lot of money and everything that they have. Insofar as the law is concerned, I've explained to you before, Cooper has no law to do what he's doing. What he's doing is thoroughly dishonest. He did not go to the Council of State, he did not have their approval, he doesn't have anybody's approval. He's very careful when he's interviewed to not say law. He says rules. He's a lawyer. He knew when he did this, the legislature was not in session, and there was not a majority in the split legislature so that they could call it in this session in order to deal with him. He played a dirty little political game, and he's costing people their lives, their houses, their cars, their family, and the whole business, because he will not let them go back to work. Insofar as people getting up and saying, well, this is the first time this has happened, that is untrue. We have had worse things than this happened to us. The Spanish Flu in 1918, and nobody talks about it, but there was another flu in 1957 that was almost as bad. It infected more than 50% of the population at one time. There were people trying to get care. Anybody, if you vote for this, anybody can voluntarily lock themselves in and stay there. What this does is allows the people that want to go out and work to work. And if you're scared to death, and you want to be in a little ball in the corner on this thing, and quiver and quake, then you can still do that. This law does not force anybody to get out of their home and go anywhere or do anything. It does not stop the self-quarantine. Fairness is fairness. The governor very carefully chose the people that he's going after, and that's basically poor people. The reason is, you notice, he did not shut anybody down who has the money to sue him. Walmart could take him on very easily. Lowe's could take him on very easily. He went after people that can't defend themselves, and that's who's been shut down, and that's what our job here as commissioners, we are sworn to support and defend the Constitution of the United States. And what he has done is in total violation of the Constitution. And we need to put a stop to it, because while he could have gotten away with two or three weeks of this, and people would have said, you know, so what? This has gone on, and it is becoming systematic, and it is becoming damaging to the nation, to our citizens, to our families. And that's why we need to pass this, in order to stop the terrible damage that's being done to our families and our individuals in this county. We are here to protect the citizens of this county, and if we fail to act, we're not doing our job. And I have one more thing, and then I'll be quiet. The city council, I spoke to members of the city council, they are willing to reexamine this if we pass this.
David, do you have any comments?
I will leave my speech in my book.
Okay.
There are two, at least, there's a lot of truth in this, okay? I grant you. But there are two things that are mentioned in the air that are just flat wrong.
Can't hear you.
Well, that's all, that's all.
Okay. Okay, Stan.
We're showing a great hesitancy to do what is right tonight. We're not going to send no message whatsoever to the General Assembly, we're going to send no message to the governor, we're sending no message to the city of Washington. By doing that, by doing nothing, allowing tyranny to persevere and win out, we're just not doing what's right for the middle of the road, middle-class person in Beaufort County that's just that's just trying to make it and has no help, cannot fight back unless we fight for him. And I'll tell you, Commissioner Repholz, if I'd had 100 people contact me and 100 people say, "You're doing wrong, Stan," and tonight it was this issue, I'd vote the same way I'm going to vote. And guess what? I'd get reelected next time. So, political courage is something you'll have to learn after some period being up here. And you do what is right regardless of what the mob says. So, I would ask, I would ask this group, I have the floor, I would ask this group to reexamine your hearts, think who you represent, and then do what is right. Think about the Constitution you swore to defend. I mean, on very, on no level is this right. On no level.
Commissioner Destrich, I agree with you 150%, and I'm voting like the most of the people asked me to do. And that is NO. Now, they got the same right, the people that wanted open. But the people that called me from Friday up until today, probably 98, well, I had two. And I'd done some research, and there was two that had a business. And most of the people, this elderly lady, said, "Don't y'all do these things to us." So, I'm doing what I was asked to do, and I don't fault you for doing what you was asked to do.
No, I'm doing what I think's right.
Well, let's call the question.
Time to vote. All those in favor of the resolution, raise your right hand. All those opposed? Motion defeated.
Okay. I guess we move to the second.
Yes.
All right. Resolution concerning Governor Cooper's Executive Order Number 135. Whereas Beaufort County Commission is mindful of the need to issue public safety, to ensure public safety in the current unend carnivorous COVID-19 outbreak, but is at the same time mindful of the need to preserve the precious liberties of our citizens under the state and federal Constitution, and to preserve the economy of our state and the jobs of our citizens. And whereas the draconian restrictions on our citizens and businesses under a series of executive orders culminating in Executive Order Number 135 raise serious questions about the appropriate consideration of the civil liberties of our citizens and the enormous potential damage to the jobs of our citizens and the health of our state economy. And whereas Part 5 of the Emergency Management Act, Chapter 166A of the North Carolina General Statute requires the governor to obtain the concurrence of the Council of State to issue an executive order that restricts the rights and actions of private citizens and private businesses as are contained in Executive Order 135, the restrictions contained in Executive Order Number 135 be of a nature as defined in NC General Statute 166A-19.30B. And whereas Governor Roy Cooper has failed to obtain the concurrence of the Council of State to issue Executive Order Number 135 and instead issued it unilaterally, be it therefore resolved that the Beaufort County Board of Commissioners does not recognize the validity of Executive Order Number 135 unless and until it receives the concurrence of the Council of State. Be it further resolved that the Beaufort County Commissioners directs that no county funds, facilities, or personnel be used to implement the provisions of Executive Order Number 135 unless and until it receives the concurrence of the Council of State. Be it further resolved that the Beaufort County Board of Commissioners strongly urges Governor
Turn this thing on. Strongly, Governor Roy Cooper to work constructively and cooperatively with the statewide elected officials comprising the Council of State to craft appropriate policies to respond to the said virus outbreak, rather than trying to assert unilateral powers he does not possess under the general statutes or the Constitution. Be it further resolved that the Beaufort County Board of Commissioners, excuse me, urges our citizens to be mindful of safe practices during the virus outbreak and take appropriate steps to protect themselves and others.
I'll make that a motion.
Is there a second?
You got a second.
You got a second.
Did you make that as a motion?
Yeah, as a motion.
Yeah. All right, we're not going to wait for anybody else. I'm going to make a second on this.
Attaboy. Discussion?
Can you? Try it again. Okay. Can you take out one of these paragraphs?
Which one?
"Be it resolved that the Beaufort County Board of Commissioners does not recognize the validity of the Executive Order Number 135 unless and until it receives the concurrence of the Council of State."
Well, it's not a law. It's a paragraph.
I understand that. You've said that before, and I understand that. But I'm asking, can you take that out?
Well, why would we not want to call it what it is?
That's what.
A paragraph.
That's not what it says, though. But that's what you're saying. You've answered my question.
No, I'm not willing.
It's a paragraph for Hood Richardson. That's what it is.
Which paragraph are you talking about, again? Countdown.
Okay, it's one, two, three, four, five. The fifth one.
"Be it resolved that Beaufort County Commissioners does not recognize the validity." No, that's not for me. That's a truth. That's a basic truth. Why would we recognize the validity? We're lending legal credence to something that is unlawful. Why would you want to do that, Frank?
I will not support it if that's in there.
Well, that's fine with me. But you just told me your mother told you not to do anything unlawful, and here you are advocating things that are unlawful.
I, no, I beg your pardon. I beg your pardon.
It is what it is.
You're right. And I hope the people can see that. Hope they can see that.
Commissioner Reboz?
I guess I wish I was an attorney or a judge, because I don't know that I have the ability to make those determinations that all this is illegal. So, I don't know that I can support something in writing that says people are violating the laws and violating the Constitution and all that when I'm not an attorney.
Any more discussion?
No.
Time to vote. All those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. All those opposed? Five, two. Motion fails.
Okay. I'm going to ask once more that we send a message to the General Assembly and to people of Beaufort County that we're going to fight for them. We wasted the last 35, 40 minutes with some pretty good arguments as to what should be done. Well, what I'm going to submit to you is pabum compared to what Hood came up with. So, while this is a lesser version of what Hood came up with, I hope you'll at least keep an open mind. I will tell you this. I wrote this weeks ago, and I did not concur with Hood about any of it. He probably didn't see it till it was in the book. So, this is without Hood's understanding, knowledge, or blessing. But it will send a message to the General Assembly. And especially after hearing our representative tonight, he's really taken this bull by the horns. So, let's say we're on his team. And I'm going to read this resolution. It's very short, succinct, and to the point. Resolution requesting the North Carolina General Assembly to enact legislation to limit the powers of the North Carolina governor from acting unilaterally for an extended period of time. Whereas during this period of the coronavirus pandemic, and while the North Carolina General Assembly was out of session, NC Governor Cooper acted unilaterally without the consent of the North Carolina's Council of State to first close North Carolina's public schools and then many of North Carolina's businesses, while limiting and in some cases eliminated North Carolina citizens' United States constitutional right to assemble. Now, it's the First Amendment. Whereas during this extended period of closures, which has been twice extended by this governor acting unilaterally by misapplying the Emergency Powers Act, which was never intended to be misapplied to this extent to promote into fruition these terrible consequences of a destroyed North Carolina economy. And whereas North Carolina governor has acted unilaterally without the benefit of specific knowledge, irrespective that that best knowledge is still yet unknown, therefore be it resolved, the Beaufort County Commissioners respectively request that North Carolina's General Assembly begin the process of writing general statutes to better define the Emergency Powers Act and act now to initiate the process to stop future North Carolina governors from acting unilaterally unchecked for extended periods of time.
Okay, we have a second discussion? Commissioner Waters?
You've outdone yourself on this one.
Uh-oh.
I've been trying to figure out where I could put an amendment in there just to test the waters with you. But I think you've done a good job. The only thing that I would add is if we knew where Keith's bill is or that he started, that we add something in reference to. Because if I understand it correctly, he's already, I guess, started the committee process.
Well, I had no knowledge of Commissioner Kidwell's efforts when I wrote this years back. So...
Well, to my knowledge, it's not made it out of committee.
This word's going to die here.
So...
No, I don't think it's going to die.
But I'm going to vote to support you on this.
Thank you.
Any more discussion? Reboz?
Stan, in the second paragraph, it says, "After the emergency, misapplied the Emergency Powers Act, which was never intended to be misapplied to the extent, to this extent." Is there a time limit in that Emergency Powers Act?
No, there's not. That's why it needs to be rewritten. What we have is...
I agree with that. But then I think you ought to take that piece of it out, just one few words. "Which was never intended to be misapplied to this extent." And just say, "By misapplying the Emergency Powers Act to promote into fruition these terrible consequences."
Okay. I'm okay with that.
You're going to need to find another second.
Another what?
Second. You can second.
I'll second.
What you want.
I'll second. I mean, I just soon, if you're going to put something out in a resolution, that'd be as right as it should be.
Hood, I don't mind accepting a friendly...
That's fine. I mean, that's fine. I'm just not going to second it.
Okay.
I'll second your motion. Because it's a truth.
Yeah.
You're denying a truth.
I will second your motion if he wants to withdraw his.
He said he didn't know that there is no time limit in that act.
He didn't know there's no time limit in that. That's why I used the words he used.
Can I mention something? Not since the Civil War has North Carolina done anything like this. And generally, you would probably need to go to martial law before you misapply our laws to this extent. Not since the Civil War. And at that time, you had the concurrence of the General Assembly in North Carolina. And this hasn't happened in our state in 160, 70 years. So, it's just, this is bold territory we're in right now. And this is going to be a fight. And you'll see other states doing the same thing. I don't know what their laws are like. I know what the laws in North Carolina are, and our governor does not have this much power. Look, let me tell you something, John. It was probably 20, 25, 30 years ago that our governor couldn't run for two terms.
Right.
I mean...
He didn't get the veto.
Yeah, he didn't have veto authority either. I mean, North Carolina has never allowed a governor to go this far afield, ever. I mean, I will take that out if I can get everybody's vote. I don't want to lose Hood's, though.
You better leave it in there, because you ain't going to get mine.
Well, I'm going to support you. I'm just not going to second it because you're removing a truth from the verbiage. I'm going to vote for it.
Did you see? Well...
Call the question.
You got your votes.
Well, okay. Is there any way you'd let me leave it in there, understanding North Carolina's never done this before?
No. Thought you...
I'm talking to John.
Okay.
I want your vote, John.
You're going to get my vote. I just didn't, I just think if we're going to send something forward, we ought to be sure that it's correct what we're saying.
I think we're correct here. I haven't heard anybody dispute what I just said.
Sorry.
I mean, this has never happened in North Carolina.
I don't disagree with that. Okay? I'm just saying, if there is no time restriction in that Emergency Powers Act...
But there will be.
Well, that's fine. That we want.
My idea, my hope here, and this is what I talked to Keith, is they're going to be able to call, if they can get this thing through, they're going to be able to call themselves back into session next time something like this happens. And whether it's a Democrat or Republican, sitting either or juxtaposed against one another, if that be the case, they don't need to have that much power. They're acting in such an authoritarian manner.
You and I are on the same page.
Okay. Well, let me leave it in there.
Mr. Booth?
I mean, Stan, I'm not going to vote for it either way.
I know you're not.
I really isn't. But I want to ask these distinguished gentlemen, if this is such a bad, 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 bad thing, which it may be, but do you think, I mean, the Speaker of the House and the Senate pro Tim, don't you think they're going to call him on this? Don't you think they're going to call the governor?
They haven't been in session.
Oh, they're going to...
They're going to be doing it now.
I don't have any confidence in either one of them.
Well, I understand that. But the thing about it is, I mean, I just think that there's enough legislators up there that got sense enough. There's enough lawyers, and neither of us in here is a lawyer. We got the closest thing, the closest thing that we got to a lawyer's hood, and neither one of us, neither one of us has consulted a lawyer. And the only thing that you come up here, Mr. Kidwell, come up here talking about what he going to do, what he can do, and his office about big as this computer, sitting a little curvy hole. So, there's 120 people up there that you got to build some consensus with. And I think, I may be wrong, but I think there's somebody up there far more, far more brighter than to let the governor go roughshod on the whole state of North Carolina. I just believe that. I got to believe that.
You haven't had the lawsuits yet.
Okay.
Commissioner Waters?
Just for your benefit, Stan, I think that's a good comment and a good move to take that out. If you don't take it out, I'm not going to support it.
I'll take it out, because I want this to go through.
I'll call the question. Okay, taking the verbiage out.
Hold on a minute. Katie, you know which part? Okay, it's the second part of the misapplication.
Remove the truth and erase the...
Sometimes Hood can give too much truth. There's plenty of other truths in there.
So, you got it, Katie? All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed? I have two. Motion passes.
Okay. Okay, this is something that I have talked to Kelly Hopkins, and I have done some research on this. And while this may not be a problem, we need to send this message anyway. We don't know what the coronavirus is going to look like months from now, so we don't need to be acquiescing to state board of elections, which is an appointed body, not an elected body, making decisions on how we should engage in our elections. Now, whatever they do, they've got to go to the General Assembly to get it changed. What I'm asking, through this long resolution, it's not too long, it's not as long as Hood's, but what I'm asking through this long resolution is for the General Assembly to do absolutely nothing. And I think if we pass this and send it on to them, let them know how we feel about it. It's about voter fraud. And anytime you make it easier for people to vote away from the polls, and what I'm hearing from Kelly Hopkins is, one of their ideas is to, instead of having two signatories as witnesses, to have only one signatory as a witness. And that could help with what we know as ballot harvesting. And we've already seen it in North Carolina. We saw a Republican and a Democrat both get in trouble over it, and it cost them both some seats. And we don't need to have that. The problem with the ballot harvesting, yeah, most of the time you catch them, but you catch them after the fact. And once you catch them after a fact, you got nobody in Washington, D.C. for 10 months, 11 months. You've got to have a whole new election. So, basically, let me read this real quick, and this is not too hard one for you guys to swallow, I hope. Resolution requesting North Carolina General Assembly to take an active role in keeping our voting process safe from voter fraud. Whereas the Beaufort County Commissioners are a body politic of the state and government of North Carolina and constitutionally sanctioned to govern as its agent at the local level on many issues important to the people of North Carolina. And whereas... North Carolina, and whereas Beaufort County Government is charged with administering the electing of local and federal political representatives, as are all of North Carolina's 100 county governments, so similarly charged to do so. Whereas, North Carolina State Board of Elections has publicly expressed that they are seeking remedy from the perceived threat of the coronavirus pandemic that could make voting in North Carolina's counties more restrictive in person with absentee voting provisions already sanctioned by North Carolina's General Assembly and already established as a remedy to not having the capacity to vote in person as also too restrictive. And whereas, North Carolina State Board of Elections has publicly stated that they will beg North Carolina's General Assembly to legislate a new law making absentee voting less restrictive, with however, a sure unintended consequence arising from such action, creating a possibility that absentee voting would be less secure from voter fraud. And whereas, North Carolina State Board of Elections and North Carolina's government is currently being sued by Government Transparency Watchdog, Judicial Watch, for keeping a million inactive voters on its county's voting rolls, while denying the public its right to obtain information about voter registration list maintenance, thus creating, however, unintended and enriched environment whereby voter fraud may occur. And whereas, North Carolina's system of voting for elected office has recently been embroiled in scandal, however unintended, where the process of absentee voting ballot harvesting produced an unreliable outcome in a congressional election, forcing a second election while leaving the congressional district unrepresented for many months. Therefore, be it resolved, the Beaufort County Commissioners adamantly request that North Carolina's General Assembly take no action at this critical juncture of this coronavirus pandemic to change and thereby weaken North Carolina's general statutes pertaining to Just want to spell it out and then say, please don't do anything.
Second.
Please don't do anything. Just leave it alone.
Discussion. Discussion.
Call for a vote.
All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed? Five-two, motion passes. Case down.
Okay. All right. This is the one where we discuss the Second Amendment and we discuss safety at the same I contend that some public buildings will not ever have security beyond what they have now, and if we allow them to go unprotected by their constitutional Second Amendment right to concealed carry with some restrictions, as we've talked about, and that the manager should give us a list of those restrictions, and within, we should approve them as a board until we see that those restrictions are favorable to a better outcome, then there's no need for this to ever come into fruition. But it involves us, just as it involves our management, and it involves our employees, and hopefully the end result will be our county employees, some of them will be able to conceal, carry, if there's ever the unfortunate evil event of a shooter in any of our buildings, they will be able to protect themselves and therefore their neighbors. You protect yourself, you can protect your neighbors as well. That's what happens. So, I'm gonna read this resolution and the changes that are in it from the last meeting. Resolution allowing concealed carry for Beaufort County employees in many of Beaufort County government buildings, whereas Beaufort County Commissioners support the Second Amendment of the United States Constitution and the inherent right of lawful owners of firearms to lawfully carry in Beaufort County concealed or otherwise. And whereas, at any moment, one or more Beaufort County's employees' lives could be placed in great jeopardy by the wrongful, purposeful, and evil intent of the deranged individual to kill fellow man, his fellow man, sorry, that's gonna have to be fixed, their fellow man, excuse me. Whereas, the Second Amendment provides for the lawful protection of our republic's citizens by ensuring that they may keep and bear arms when they, at their sole well-considered discretion, know that they or other innocents are or will be violently threatened by those of evil intent. And whereas, while Beaufort County's government employees will be lawfully permitted to concealed carry, Beaufort County's county manager will be further charged to devise additional safety guidelines for said employees, those guidelines to be given final approval by the Beaufort County Commissioners in open session. And whereas, those government buildings that qualify for our government employees to concealed carry are all government, Beaufort County government buildings, excepting those government buildings not covered by the resolution, which are the Beaufort County Courthouse, the campus of Beaufort County Community College, and all campuses within the Beaufort County school system. And whereas, through the accurate prism of perfect hindsight, we have collected data that definitively states that the greatest protection that a lawful gun owner and those good citizens closer to them will ever enjoy is the weapon that they carry for the constitutionally protected purpose of their self-defense and the defense of others. Therefore, be it resolved, the Beaufort County Commissioners support and defend the Second Amendment of the United States Constitution, are hereby greatly resolved to allow concealed carry privileges for all qualified and approved Beaufort County government employees in many of Beaufort County government's buildings. There, all the changes necessary. What we would effectively do...
Is there a second?
Is we would allow people to enjoy their constitutional Second Amendment rights with an overlay of greater restrictions of who can carry on the premises.
Discussion.
I assume that this, we voted in that this will not take effect until Brian comes back to us.
It will not take effect until we all approve again. I mean, we could turn this thing down if we don't get the right, if we can't come to agreement on all the restrictions, additional restrictions. So, this is just the first step. That's all it is.
Yeah. I'm almost over, Jim.
I'm sorry.
Just to speak to that comment, or the question, or the statement, that I would bring you back some restrictions on that. I've reached out and had a conversation with a fellow manager in Pitt County who, they did this, and asked him about those things. Essentially, my understanding is, if you have a concealed carry permit, you show that to someone, to the manager or the department head, they are aware that you have that, so they don't restrict any additional, they don't add any additional restrictions to what you are allowed by the law to do. They just say you can't carry it, and you can't carry it in courthouse, can't carry it, and things like that. So, I don't know that there would be essentially any additional restrictions that we would place on someone, because I think what would happen then is, we would be challenged by them saying, well, you can't tell me what I can and can't do. You said I can, you said I can carry my constitutionally concealed carry. So, I think it would be more of a notification so that we would know instead of restrictions. So, just wanted to...
Thank you, Brian.
Commissioner Waters.
A couple of comments. I've not had one employee call me and say they want to have a concealed carry, that they feel threatened. Number two, I think it was the last Saturday in January, I took the concealed carry course, and I've applied, and they're doing the background check, so I hadn't got mine yet. And I guess my question is, do you have yours, Stan? And when did you take the course? I mean, I can tell you, taking that course and standing there and shooting 30 rounds at a target about two foot away does not qualify me as an employee to take action.
What has that got to do with the issue?
Mr. Chair.
It's all about the issue. I don't want the county taking on that liability of an employee doing that.
Can I answer you? Okay, I'm gonna answer the part where you discuss liability. Think about the county's liability. If some gunman goes in there, there are people, and I've talked to them, Hood says he's talked to them as well.
Oh, yeah.
And they have a concealed carry permit. They are fully qualified, as the manager said. If they have that permit, they're qualified enough as far as the lawful agencies believe. Think about your liability. If you deny them the right to protect themselves, their Second Amendment right to protect themselves, and they get shot up and their friends get shot up, oh, but in a minute and a half, two minutes, the police gets there and they only got to call, they get there, they subdued the killer, there's only 10 bodies instead of maybe one or two. Think about your liability then, when we had the opportunity to do what was, I think, right at this point. So, I mean, you're saying that I don't know what the future's gonna bring, and you don't. I don't know. We talked about the coronavirus tonight. We don't know what the future's gonna bring. However, we do know these people have a Second Amendment right to carry, and they have been duly licensed to concealed carry. And if they shoot up somebody wrongfully, they're gonna go to jail for the rest of their life. But if they protect themselves and they protect their friends as an ancillary benefit, that's a good thing.
It's just...
I mean, hey, it's a law of percentages. I think our percentages are better to ally ourselves with the Second Amendment on this issue and the rightful permit to concealed carry.
I'm not gonna vote for it. I have yet to have one person come to me and go in there and talk to some of the people down in Social Services, where you walk in with your kids and then those parents walk out without their kids, and how volatile it can get down there. I'll never vote for concealed weapons.
You don't want to leave them protected?
When they've, they got walls down there. If they said that they feel they're having a problem, they'll call a deputy sheriff. But having people wandering around with a concealed weapon, no, I'm not gonna vote for it.
You don't think that somebody could come in with a...
Ed Booth has a question.
Get through that door?
Ed Booth has a question. Go ahead.
I withhold my question, because this is ridiculous.
Richardson.
Commissioner Evans, are you saying that we hire the kind of people that would go around killing other people, that the county hires those people? That's what you just said.
What I said was, our parents go in there with their children, and then those children are taken away and put in foster homes. That's not a very good environment for somebody to be walking around with a gun.
I don't understand the environment for who to be walking around with a gun. We're talking about employees carrying the guns. We're not talking about the public walking in with a gun.
They're gonna walk in with a gun, whether you tell them they can or can't.
Commissioner Langley.
Commissioner Waters, you hit the nail on the head when you said you stand before the target and you shoot. But once, in a high-pressure situation, people's breathing change, their heartbeat changes, and a lot of people, their coordination changes. And so, that is too much of a risk factor for anybody to have to deal with. There are some folk, it doesn't matter what the situation is, they can be as cool as a cucumber. But then you have the other 80% who go all to pieces and will probably shoot everybody except for the perpetrator, probably shoot the person sitting right beside them, because they're not equipped to do that. I just cannot see us allowing people to come in with their guns, and I've said this before, and y'all said it's gonna get me in trouble. Everybody who works for the county don't have good sense.
Commissioner Waters.
Well, now, when you say people come in with their guns, we're talking about employees with guns. You guys keep acting like we're condoning the public in these buildings. We're not.
Commissioner Waters.
I have a son who's a lieutenant colonel in the Air Force, and he carries a concealed weapon. When he's on base, guess where his concealed weapon is?
In the locker.
It's in his car. That's the restriction. That's the restriction. Lieutenant Colonel, and flew the F-16, and now he's training pilots all over the world, and that's what we're telling somebody with 22 years of service. And I think that anybody that can drop a bomb knows when to pull the trigger.
Right.
I mean, it's not, you know, the concealed carry, I think, gets you there, but I can tell you, if I get it, I'm not sure that I'm gonna put it in my truck, because I'm afraid if I put it in the truck...
You use it.
I'm gonna use it on somebody, and then I'm gonna wish that I didn't do it. Now, if you come in my house, it's a different story, because that's my territory and you're off limits, so.
Can I, let me answer that. I mean, you know, in the very near future, we've had what happened in Fort Hood, where someone came in and shot up a bunch of people. Then, just more recently, we had Pensacola. A bad decision by our bureaucrats in the military should not make fertile ground for us to make a bad decision here. And can we not learn from an instance where one person's able to kill teens of military folk? And you know there's guns on that base, they couldn't get there in time. These people lost their lives. Somebody should have been carrying. All of them should have been carrying. That guy would have gone down quickly. That's just a bad decision that military makes.
Call the question.
Yeah, not everybody's perfect, and in that regard, our military's made a tremendous, grievous error. Can't we learn from that?
Time to vote and call the question. All those in favor of Stan's resolution, raise your right hand. All those opposed?
I raised my hand in there.
Okay. All those in favor of Stan's proposal? All those opposed? Four-three. Motion failed.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I would like to make a motion that this don't come up till after the November election.
I'll second. You second?
I'll third it.
All those in favor, raise your right hand. Seven-zero, we're good.
I'm voting for it.
Mr. Chairman, point of order. I would like to add to the closed session a report on our last closed session.
Okay, 'cause I...
I got it.
You got it?
Yeah, you added it.
Oh, I'm just...
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. What I was...
Yeah, we add that to the closed session. I'm fine. Go ahead.
Go ahead, Dan.
What I was thinking about is, we have been through some tough times for it, is our teachers, our parents, and our lunchroom workers, and I gotta commend them all. As one of the political speakers tonight said, have you tried teaching a third grade? These parents have been given a task that we had never had before, and I have rode around the community and seen these lunch workers out doing their job, and these teachers doing their thing, trying to make the citizens of Beaufort County life a lot more comfortable. And if, I was gonna do it earlier today and I forgot it, but if this board would give our clerk permission to write a resolution to the school personnel, teachers, and put it in there, teachers, parents, and lunchroom workers, and tell them that we want to commend them for a job well done during this drastic time.
I don't have a problem with it, but I'd like to be able to read it before I vote on it.
Well, that's fine.
And we're gonna be meeting in a matter of, well, can we, we're gonna meet here, your manager report, right before our equalization review? We could vote on it then.
Well, I mean...
Yeah, that'll be a formal commissioner meeting.
I'll second. Can you send out an email?
Yeah, send it by email, because...
Yeah, we don't have to...
We ain't gonna put anything crazy in there about suing them.
Back into what you jumped on Stan at the last meeting for. You can't do it by email. You gotta do it sending it immediately.
Yeah, just bring it to us then. We don't...
Well, let's take a vote and see what hap... No, that's good. Send it by, just bring it to us next.
Well, yeah, what's good for the goose is good for the gander.
Well, no, we just, I mean...
Yeah, we're gonna start doing the stuff anyway that way.
I mean, it's not, I didn't do it for goose, good for the goose, good for the gander. I just done it because these workers done a very, very good job.
I concur.
The question is the letter that Brian got, a revised letter, asking us to join in with six other counties on sending a letter to the governor, asking for them to consider doing some kind of a regional approach.
It's Beaufort, Corrit, Raymond, Jones, Hongo, Tamaco, and Wayntown. And Hyde has been added to that as well, I understand. I don't think it listed on it, but they said they talked to Hyde.
We're gonna see that at the next meeting, too.
I'd see it.
Oh, we join now.
It's you.
We just approved a lot of the letters already there.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we add our letter or our name to the list.
Is there a second?
Second that.
You second? This is discussion. All in favor, please raise your...
Yeah, I'd like to see the letter.
I'm in favor.
All...
What about the rest you guys?
He passed, they passed it out.
All those in favor, raise your right hand. Tell Stan, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Stan?
Beaufort, Stan.
Come on, Stan.
Vote for it, Stan.
Come on, Stan.
You can't jump.
All, yeah, all those opposed.
Well, you liked it.
Five two, motion passes.
All right.
Wait a minute, he voted against his own motion?
No, 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 I didn't make the motion, it's about the letter.
The letter.
Oh, the letter, you voted against the letter.
You need a good.
I got it, I got my.
This letter, I found it.
Yeah.
All right. Close second.
Close second.
We need a motion going to closed session?
Turn around.
Motion to go to closed session.
Motion is needed to go into closed session under NCGS 14331811A3 to consult with an attorney employed or retained by a public body in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege between the attorney and the public body. A personnel matter will also be discussed under NCGS 14331811A6 to consider the qualifications, competence, performance condition, and appointment of a public officer or employee or prospective public officer or employee.
Second, okay. All those in favor, there we go.
Yeah.
Seven zero.
You just stay here.
We stay here.
Stay here?